Well, to order the Kensington, Town of Kensington Council meeting for Wednesday, September 10th, 2025. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance if we all stay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now that we've opened the meeting, I just want to announce that Councilmember Sparker will not be joining us tonight. He has a family conflict, so it'll just be the three council members of myself. So we have an opportunity for a moment of silence. Is there anyone that we should be uplifting?
If we can, the Lannan family. These are dear friends of mine in Casey's. We've known them pretty much since we moved to Kensington. Our families grew up together within Cedar Lane and at KP. We just were vacationing with him last year, but Ford passed away suddenly in August, leaving behind his wife Kate and four kids in Germany while on active duty with the US Army. And I know they're still working through everything to just get back home. But if everybody could keep the Lannan family, your thoughts and prayers would be much appreciated.
Video? Okay, if we can bow our head. Okay, thank you very much. Council, you received the minutes for the two meetings that we had, the July 15th organizational council meeting, and then the August 13 special council meeting. Can we get a motion? I didn't see any corrections on any of the meetings, so if we can get an approval for the first one, which is our July 15th town organizational council meeting.
I'll move to approve the July 15th town organizational and council meeting minutes.
I know we're in charge of separating.
But you said separate it?
Okay, I'll move to approve the July 15th town organizational meeting minutes.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
I have.
Okay, all right, you want to do the next one?
Okay, I'll move to approve the last 15 council meeting minutes.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Okay, thanks either.
Yeah.
The August 13th?
Okay, I'll move to approve the August 13th special council meeting minutes.
Okay, and could I get clarity? That is our closed session, is that correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Just want to make sure that it was a closed session, because it does not say that on the agenda. Okay, and that was to discuss a employee issue. Okay, is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, let's move down. Matt?
Sure, we'd like to acknowledge the closed session meeting on August 13th, 2025, to discuss the appointment, employment assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, performance evaluation of an appointee, employer, official over whom it has jurisdiction. So we meant closed session. For reference, I'd also like to announce that Jamie Sims, who has been with our Public Works Department for 30 years, announced his retirement last month. His last day with the town was August 23rd. The town staff is looking forward to having a retirement party for him later this year, and we will all miss Jamie. He is our friend, and he's been very good to all of us in this town, so.
Yeah, thank you. Any questions from the audience regarding that knowledge? Okay, all right, okay, number two?
Sure, Crabtree Dispensary is here. They would like to make a presentation before the mayor and council to discuss the Crabtree dispensary location at 3740 University Boulevard, and Frank is here if you'd like to.
Yes.
And Felicia, is that correct? Felicia? Yeah, yeah. Rayne?
So I feel like you guys usually start with names, streets. So Frank is University Boulevard. I'm joined by my business partner Felicia Rami. I just want to start by thanking the council, Matt, Tracy, for including us on the agenda. We appreciate the opportunity to speak with you about our business on this issue. We're the owners of Crabtree Dispensary. We're in process of trying to open a dispensary at 3740 University Boulevard here in Kensington. We understand you might have some concerns about our business. So we're here to try to address those concerns, take any questions, and open the dialogue up for this group. We are members of this community. Felicia grew up in Baltimore. She lives in Baltimore with her husband, her daughter, and she runs catering business that serves clients throughout the state of Maryland. I grew up right down the street. I'm from Chevy Chase. My parents still live in Chevy Chase, and my brother, sister-in-law, and two nephews live here in Kensington on Puller Drive. So I don't seek to do any harm to this community. We're trying to operate a legal and licensed dispensary business here in Kensington. We have ties to this community. It's important for us to be here. We are a small business. We are a startup. It's just me and Felicia. This location is the full scope of our business. So I'd like to spend maybe seven or eight minutes just raising some of the concerns that I've heard through petitions and this meeting and other channels, and do my best to try to address some of those concerns. So I'll talk about our process for engaging with town, our process for engaging with the county, the due diligence that we did on this location, onsite consumption, some concerns about crime at the location, and lastly, just exposure to, I guess, youth in Kensington. So the first concern, we heard that perhaps we haven't been transparent enough, or that we might have tried to slip this issue past the stakeholders involved in the process. We've navigated this process as best we can in good faith legally. We've been in constant contact with the county since March of 2024. It's been over a year. We met with the Department of Public Services in May of 2024. We received a zoning confirmation letter from DPS in June of 2024. And eventually, this year in February, we applied for building them. So we've been talking to the county about this dispensary for over a year. We've also been in contact with this group, the mayor, the manager, Alex, in this very building. We were here in March. We've talked about this project. We've been open. We've been here. The second issue I want to talk about is just our due diligence on this location. So we got our building permits in early May. We got a building permit from the county. We got a building permit from the town. Shortly thereafter, we signed a long-term lease. We signed a construction contract, and we went and started the renovation. We spent over $200,000 on this location. We made it about a third of the way through construction. And then on July 8th, we received a notice of violation, shutting down our project, saying that there were two places of worship within 500 feet of our dispensary located at 3720 Ferry Gallow. On the same day, both of those places of worship were also served notice of violation. They have never applied for building permits. They have never applied for use in occupancy. They don't have use in occupancy certificates as places of worship. We were surprised by the county's decision to give us notices of violation. The county's known about these churches since March. They still moved forward and gave us a building permit in May, so that doesn't make any sense to us. In terms of our due diligence, looking at the 500-foot radius around 3740 University Boulevard to make sure there are no sensitive locations, places of worship, things of the like. We primarily used the Maryland Cannabis Administration zoning map. It shows all sensitive locations within the county, within the state. Neither church shows up on this map. Montgomery County, I think, as mentioned by one of the council members in previous meetings, also has a list, a database, and a map of places of worship. Neither church shows up on this map or in this database. You might think it's easy to Google search these things. It's not. If you search for churches in Kensington, places of worship in Kensington, you won't find these two churches. They don't show up, and maybe there's a reason why they don't show up. Maybe they're trying to hide. So we're being penalized by some bad actors that don't approach their respective processes legally. And so we are a bit frustrated. We're at risk of losing our livelihood, our jobs, our investment, our business. I also want to talk about the notion that there will be consumption on site. Public consumption of cannabis is illegal. We abide by the law. There will be no consumption inside, outside, anywhere on the premise. There's also a claim that dispensary will attract crime. I think any retail business is susceptible to crime. All we can do is do our best to try to prevent it, deter it. We'll have security cameras inside, outside. They run 24/7, 365. They're attached to alarm systems and panic buttons. We also have two secure product vaults. We've got access control doors that prevent unauthorized entry, so we're following all the regulations. We're doing everything that we can. And then the last thing I want to address is the notion that the presence of a dispensary will normalize cannabis or expose the use to cannabis. I'm not sure exactly what the concern is. I think we're not going to sell cannabis to minors. We will sell cannabis legally. We will scan IDs for every customer that walks in. But there is an interesting study by the Marijuana Policy Project that looked at this very question over the long term in 21 states, and they found that cannabis consumption amongst teens actually decreased in 19 of those states. And it's pretty simple logic. If you move a market from an illicit market where teens can buy drugs from drug dealers, and then you move it to a legal, regulated market where people have to show their IDs, teen access to cannabis decreases, and as a result, their consumption decreases. I probably haven't addressed many of the issues you would like to discuss, so if it's okay with the council, would love to open it up for questions, concerns, comments, and maybe make this more of a dialogue and a conversation.
Okay, well, we'll first start with the council. If they have any questions. Connor, you want to start?
Sure. First, thank you for coming. Sounds like you guys have been at this for some time. Kind of wish you'd come in sooner.
Same.
I mean, door's always open.
I was unaware of us being on the agenda.
The, you just ask. It's not, you know, nothing special. A couple of questions, just on operations. So you talked about, you know, security and the regulations that go into it. What about your operating plan? So what days of the week, what hours of the day are you planning to operate the dispensary?
Yeah, we'll be open seven days a week. Our hours of operation are to be determined. We're still a long way from opening. Most dispensaries are open for 12 hours a day. The regulations say you can't sell cannabis before 8:00 AM or after 11:00 PM. I would guess our hours would be something like 9:00 AM to 11:00.
You're taking over a former bank location that, I'm just looking at it on the map real quick. How many parking spots?
Ten.
Ten. And there's a drive-through. Are you anticipating using the drive-through?
Yes.
How are you using the drive-through?
We are going to put in a drive-through window. Customers can order online in advance. They'll pull up to the drive-through window. They'll give their ID to the budtender. They'll pay for the product. They'll be given a bag.
This is just a curiosity. Heck, are you permitted to use it with the county?
You should ask the county that question.
Have you applied for a permit to use it with the county?
I don't believe we need a permit to use it. It's been in existence since the building was built.
Have you, and here's why I'm asking you. It's not a gotcha question. I want you, like, what I'm trying to figure out is, its previous use was a bank. Your use is pharmacy? Is that what it's going to be under?
I think so.
But that's a change of use, and would that change of use require, because there's different standards of how many cars might show up. So would it require a traffic analysis or a queuing analysis? And so if it does, it sounds like you haven't done one.
When we met with DPS in May of last year, we asked the same question. We were referred to various individuals who work for the county. I believe Jonathan Jones and Matt Foden were the two stakeholders involved in this discussion. The conclusion was, we do not need to do anything to use the existing drive-through window. It was part of our construction documents in our permit application that was approved.
Okay. The, I would make sure you double-check the county. I mean, I don't know. That's why I'm asking, but, you know, if it's a critical part of your business plan. My curiosity is, we've seen other things change uses, and, you know, it changes the standard for queuing. And do you have enough space for your use as a pharmacy? You also have, but residential. What is, you know, operating plan just for other things? Because we've had this with other commercial businesses. Things like, you know, lighting, sound, other, you know, just interferences with quality of life.
Yeah, University Boulevard is a pretty heavily trafficked road. It's pretty well lit. I don't think we're going to add any incremental noise or light to that current environment.
Will you have security lighting off the back of your building?
We'll have lighting that the regulations require.
Okay, if you have a lighting plan yet?
I do not have a specific lighting plan. It might be in our instruction documents in our permit application, so I could send that to you after.
Just, you know, lighting, depending on how you do it, right? Is it downward facing? Is it outward facing? Is it going into bedroom windows of a budding property?
Lighting under the soffit of the exterior. My understanding is we're keeping the location as is. I think we might be changing the light fixtures themselves, but I don't expect a major change in the lighting concept.
In, when you change the fixtures, are you changing the lumens or?
I would think so. It's a really old building. It hasn't been used for years, so I think the lighting is probably due for an upgrade.
Matt, is there a signage package yet?
We spoke with him, Frank, about a signage package earlier this year. We haven't done anything yet. There are regulations within signage and illumination and everything that we talked to Frank about.
As well as in state law?
Correct. So, and there's conditions. We can put on the permit regards to the lighting and times of business and everything, which we have discussed Frank about, but we'll need to discuss further, assuming this moves forward, so.
I'll pause. Let you guys go.
Go ahead, Meeve.
I, as of one question, but first, thank you for your presentation and for coming. It's really helpful to hear the perspective of the business owners, the business owners coming in and providing their, the history of this and, you know, what you've gone through, and understand you're also in a challenging position. Appreciate that. To me, it seems like this is really boiling down to a legal issue, so I was wondering if you could describe the appeal that you filed and that you're going to have a hearing on in a couple of days?
November 12th.
No, that's a pre-hearing.
No, it's on the 24th of September, is that?
That's the pre-hearing.
Okay, so in a couple of months.
Yeah.
And what, the, you know, depending on how it's ruled, and you can predict, what is the next step, I guess, from your perspective? And then I guess a somewhat related question. Sorry, there's two. I said there was one. What is the current status of the church? What are the current statuses of the churches?
So for your second question, you should ask the churches. You should ask the county. For the first question?
Sorry, sorry. You said they were given an order to stop what?
They were served a notice of violation because they'd never applied for building permits. They don't have use in occupancy. They're illegally operating. So their notice of violation gave them 30 days to take remedial action to address those.
Okay, so we should check to see if you're on that?
Check with them. I don't want to speak on behalf of the two churches.
Sorry, so moving back to the first question.
Yeah, and then your first question, can you remind me again?
Just what the appeals process? Yeah, and what is exact, what is your appeal?
Yeah, so our notice of violation gave us 30 days to respond. The immediate remedy is to, you know, file for an appeal with the Montgomery County Board of Appeals. You guys probably know the workings of that body much better than I do, but yes, we have filed an appeal in that process. There is a hearing coming up where we'll present, you know, our argument for why we think the notice of violation should be rescinded.
Are you able to share some of what that argument would be? Is it, I mean, we have gotten some of the documents. I don't know if everyone else.
It was attached to the agenda.
I think the simplest way to boil it down is, we don't believe that the two churches are pre-existing places of worship. They never got use in occupancy as places of worship. The lower lever, the lower level church is in the basement of an office building with only one entrance and exit. From a life safety perspective, you can't have general assembly there. It's very unsafe. So that is the synthesis of our position. There is other components to it that you can see in the appeal. But that's the gist of the argument.
Okay, thank you.
It is our understanding that the owner of the building doesn't plan to make any improvements to make it so that's another reason why they're leaving.
So they're going to leave, okay. Thank you for answering.
Thank you for being here, both of you, to share information and answer some questions. Following up on the church theme, I'm curious if you've had any communication with them, either when you first became aware of their existence or at different points in this process, and if so, can you describe it?
I reached out to Pastor Coley in March. He didn't respond. That's the extent of the communication.
Okay, I was curious by your phrase "bad actors" and didn't know if you, what you meant by that.
They don't file annual reports with the state of Maryland. They're not in good standing with the state. They're operating without all their required.
Okay. And I also, in your, your history of doing the work to get this location up and running, I'm curious if you could share if there are other locations that you examined that were not abutting residential property, but that were in more of a commercial strip?
I honestly don't recall. We weren't looking out for abutting residences because it's not in ordinance.
Okay.
And did you examine other locations? Just what was, what was it that drew you to this one, I guess, is the question?
Christina probably knows this. It's very hard to find dispensary locations that are compliant. If you find one that is outside of 500 feet of all the sensitive locations, you're probably encountering landlord that has a loan from a bank that will prohibit them from accepting revenue from a cannabis company. So that rules out a lot of potential locations. If you go to a strip mall and there's a Giant or a CVS, those anchor tenants have the ability to say, no, no cannabis companies are allowed here. So finding a location is extremely, extremely difficult for many, many, many reasons. So adding an extra filter of 100 feet from residents, we're not going to try to make it any harder than it already is. So we just looked at the requirements that we have in front of us.
So my only question is, we, we had met in March, and it was to talk about building permits from the town. And I think we briefly talked about the churches that we were made aware of them, and you were now made aware of them, and that the MCA, the Maryland Cannabis Administration, they didn't see them either, I think is what you said. And I think that propelled us to, to write a letter to the MCA and get some clarification on that. And we have written two letters to them and basically have not gotten. The first letter, the response was, talk to the county. And the county provided you with permits, which we're obligated to provide you with permits because their zoning is our zoning. And then we sent a second letter, and we have yet to receive any response again from the MCA. So that's very disappointing that they're not more helpful.
There's a lot of finger pointing between the county and the Maryland Cannabis Administration. There's always growing pains rolling out, the new industry. These laws became effective July of 2023, so the county has had ample time to figure out how they should address, you know, their ordinance, but, yeah, I think some of the confusion is they're pointing between the county and the state and who's responsible for enforcing state laws.
Well, I do feel like when this came up, that they were playing catch-up, and you kind of got caught in the middle of that, the county was.
I think that's a fair, fair assessment.
Yeah, so. Okay.
I, just one other question. Just, something just keeps lingering for me, Frank. Your first point, which I, I appreciate that it looks like you went back and watched previous meetings and certainly through other emails or whatnot. You tried to address all the points that have been raised. The very first one was transparency, and the fact that, you know, you guys have been doing this since like May of '24, I think is when you first started, and clearly, you've, you know, your engagement with the town thus far as for building permits, right? And maybe sign package discussion. But you, you had, you've chosen not to come before the town council and introduce yourselves. Have you met with any of the nearby residents at all or other businesses nearby?
Businesses, yes. Nearby residents, no.
Why?
I wouldn't know how to approach that, to be honest. Like, just going door to door and knocking didn't seem appropriate.
The community forum? Perhaps a town council meeting?
This is the first time I've opened a dispensary, so we're learning, you know, how this works on the fly. So.
Does MCA ever provide guidance on, hey, here's some best practices for how to create the best environment of working relationship between the other businesses or residents nearby?
They might. I'm not sure.
Well, tonight's your opportunity, because you've got five residents from the Farragut Avenue, which is behind you, so I know they would like an opportunity to speak as well, so is there, it's really difficult to ask Frank questions. You actually have to come forward. So if you want to just stand by, close by, if people want to ask Frank a question, this is an opportunity. So just come up and give your name and your street, not the house number.
So yeah, there's a lot. Let me just get some, I just want to curious about some facts, especially the timing of your application process, right? So I voided your emails with the MCA, perhaps they told you. And you knew, they warned you about the church issue.
Who said?
Karen Johnson?
Okay.
I mean, it's right there in black and white.
What did she say?
I was just reaching out to the local planning and zoning authority, who handles the permitting of that area to ensure the zoning needs qualifications. MCA has noticed many locations selected by conditional licensees have potential zoning conflicts, blah, blah, blah. I mean, includes 500 feet from a place of worship. This is in April 10th, which is before you signed your, even before you signed your lease. So they, I mean, I, there was confusion about pointing fingers, but the MCA was very clear in saying that they don't have zoning privileges up to the county. So you knew about this issue, you know, well in advance. And then also, let's point out the, oh, the irony of booting two, you know, African-American churches from their presence, from their location, so you can have your pot shop. It's not a great start. And as the mayor's pointing out, you know, to come letting, you, you can't go where there's a CVS. They don't want you. Giant doesn't want you. We have liquor store across the street in the strip mall. You would be happy if you went there. But you haven't made any attempt to sort of assuage the concerns of the folks who live right behind you. So you're going to have a tough road. You're going to have, you know, how many people, you know, 60 pairs of eyes watching your every move. It just goes forward somehow. So it's an unfortunate beginning to how things are going to go. But yeah, we kind of just, just, and I'll sit down, just, you knew about this issue before you signed your lease, but you decided to plow it.
No, we, we decided to plow it because the county and the town gave us building permits.
Yes, it's different from a occupancy permit. You do, I know it's your first time out, but like, I understand there's 22, right? They're separate.
We got our zoning approved on our use in occupancy application in April.
I don't think that's possibly true, right?
It's absolutely true. It's on the website.
Todd, it's hard to, you're not being my.
The churches, we're not booting them. We're happy to coexist with the churches. The county could allow us to coexist with churches. We're not booting any of them out.
You need them to go for you to go away.
We do not. The county does not have to enforce the public rule. Local jurisdictions have zoning authority. They can choose not to enforce it. So the county is putting out the churches. I'm not putting out any. We're happy to coexist, but they congregate once a week.
They would never, they shouldn't be there if they weren't going in.
Well, best of it.
Okay, Todd, you're going to have to argue up next to it. Sorry. I know. To make your points, how's that? Okay. Rebecca, that's better.
I'm Rebecca Rand. I live on Farragut Avenue, and I would, yeah, absolutely. I'm Rebecca Rand. I live on Farragut Avenue as well. And I would like for you to turn around and look at the community behind you. Okay, you said that you were part of our community. I've never seen you before in Kensington. I mean, maybe you frequented restaurants, but you're certainly not a part of our community, because I feel like a community member would make time to come to a town meeting or to approach neighbors, because that's what we are. We are neighbors. And we've not seen your face before today. So I was really disappointed when you, you know, you're from Maryland. You live down the road in Chevy Chase. But Kensington is a very small place. I live here. I work here. I'm actually a school teacher. I teach second grade. And I'm very concerned about the children of this town. I would do anything to support and protect the children of this town as an educator. That is my job. And to open a pot shop in town is, it's not my idea of a, you know, it's not a good idea. To me, I understand that it's legal, and it may be something that's out of my hands, but I need you to understand that this is a small community, and we take pride in talking to each other, in communicating with each other. Okay, and we are open with each other. And for you to say that you're part of this community, I don't think any of. And for you to say that you're part of this community, I don't think any of these people would recognize you if you sneezed on them before today. Okay, that's number one. Number two, um. You can Google those churches, we all did, all of us back here, in fact, other neighbors, we Googled them and we knew they existed. Because we've seen them meet, but we also were able to Google them and they appeared. So I just wanted to say that. I'm not happy about the drive-through, um, I don't know if you've spent time on University Avenue, especially between the hours of. Oh, I don't know, two thirty and seven o'clock, it's a standstill. Okay, so to have another shop open up there with a drive-through, open until nine o'clock, which. Blows my mind, but between those hours, the traffic is a nightmare, so I think I need to know if you've done a traffic study. I, I wasn't clear, I maybe I missed it, but I think a traffic study is very important. And additionally, you know. I, we live, we all live right behind it, so I think lighting is important, you, you. Nine o'clock at night, I mean, many of us have, well, I have kids, um, Todd has kids. Lots of little kids on that street and they go to bed early and to have action and movement in a driveway and a parking lot. Behind their homes just doesn't seem like the type of, of thing that we want in our community. Thank you.
We haven't done traffic study. Connecticut Avenue gets on average fifty-two thousand vehicles a day, I think University gets something similar. I don't think we're gonna drive any incremental traffic, you guys know it's already a very heavily trafficked road. Um, we haven't done traffic study. Regarding the children, I've got a two-year-old nephew lives here, I've got a one-year-old nephew lives here, I'm not trying to harm the children or expose them to bad things.
You ready to yell?
Sure. It's okay.
Again, it's me, Rebecca Rand Farragut, I think, I think the point about being community is that we're transparent. I'm not saying you're trying to harm any children, what I'm saying is that we're all transparent, we're open and that's what makes a community. And we've not seen your face before today. And then that's, that's all I have to say about that, I'm gonna sit down.
Frank, can I ask you another question?
Sure.
This, again, I'm operating, just, I chair a development review, so I look at a lot of these things, so I'm just curious. I know you're new to dispensary, so if you don't know the answer, again, I'm just trying to get an understanding of it, like how many customers on a typical day or in a typical hour or does a dispensary seat? Because you have ten parking spots, that's what I'm.
So I think the average dispensary now is doing about eleven million in, in annual sales. I think an average transaction is seventy dollars, so if you do the math, you can figure out how many customers they would get over the course of the year and then, and do the math there.
Give me a ballpark. I'm just trying to figure out ten parking spaces, how many employees will be needed to run a dispensary?
We'll see how it goes, if the dispensary does well, we'll keep hiring more staff, but I can't predict what the demand's gonna be at that.
What do you plan to start with?
We'll have a general manager, we'll have an inventory manager, we'll have two receptionists, we'll have a host of butters.
So on any given day, how many might be, I'm just trying to figure out how many.
Probably two or three people onsite.
On a shift?
Because things will be very, very slow.
Okay.
And then we'll see how it goes.
But as you get ramped up, let's say six months in. Yeah, I, I mean, again, these aren't, are we talking six people?
We'll see, we'll see, I can't predict the demand.
Are your. Employees going to be parking onsite?
Sure.
So if you're ten spots, six, eight of them could be taken by employees. My question is where, you're on a busy street that has no street to park you. So when, if people come to your shop and there is no parking available. What is the traffic routing that you anticipate, that you've told the county and where are they parking? And to get to your shop?
Yeah, so I mean, there's. There's shopping centers in Kensington, they're very congested, there's.
I didn't ask, Frank, I'm asking about your building, let's stick to your building.
So if a customer pulls up and the parking lot is full, if I was a customer, I would go to another dispensary perhaps in Wheaton, a mile down the road.
Again, can I, can you answer the question though? Okay, I'll be very, so customer comes northbound on University. It's a right into your property, correct?
Yes.
If the parking lot is full, how, what? What are they going to do?
I don't know.
Where would they exit?
Pretty well, I, I, I don't understand your question.
Where would they exit your property?
They would exit, uh, you know, there's two egresses.
Right, so where would, if they wanted to still shop, I'm just trying to figure out where are they gonna park? These are, so Frank, why I'm asking these questions, these aren't gotcha questions, but these are operationally important questions because if your parking lot is full. And people don't want to go to Wheaton and they want to shop there because it's on their way home, whatever reason. They're gonna go somewhere. And what I'm trying to figure out just from a perspective of the communities that I chair is, what is the impact to our road network? What is the impact to residential parking? What is the impact to, um, you know, a queue blocking Farragut Avenue? If there was a number of cars, what is, are there, you know, these are the things I'm, I'm curious of, and so you would have had to answer these questions for the county, I'm just curious. What your thoughts are.
Um, I'm not sure what customers will do if they're stuck in traffic and they can't get into the parking lot, perhaps they will queue, perhaps they will drive and go about their day, I can't, I can't really predict that for you.
So in, if they're coming in the morning, um, and they make a right on Dupont, which is the next street to the north of your property.
It's Perry.
Oh, Perry, sorry, I'm going to stop, Perry, um, and they make a right. What happens when they get to Lexington? Do you know?
I know that there's a do not enter, right, at certain times.
So then, that, that's what I'm trying to figure out, it's like.
Yeah, it's kind of our responsibility to control people's driving patterns, I don't, I don't know what you want me to say.
So you have had no discussions with DPS or with DOT about?
We've applied for building permits and used an occupancy.
Have you had any discussions with the county about traffic or queuing?
No.
Okay.
It may not think one individual, isn't it done by square footage?
I mean, it is done. Partly that.
Not to excuse Frank for not being able to answer your question, but isn't it done by square footage when the parking issue gets into?
Yes.
So.
It's in the ordinance.
Okay, I, that's why.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, um, obviously the concern is people will start parking on residential streets, I think that's what he's trying to, I think that's where he's going with that.
You know, and I'm just trying to figure out, yeah, people are gonna get around.
Right.
Um, what I'm concerned about, right, is especially, you're open at nine AM. Somebody makes a right onto Perry and then. They're giving, you know, because they maybe don't know the roads, right? And then they're presented with a do not enter, right, that, the do not enters are there to protect the safety of the kids walking to bus stops. The very thing that I know you are concerned about as well, I don't want them making illegal turns, I know you don't control that, I'm just trying to figure out. How, you know. What happens if your parking lot is full? One of my bigger concerns is, hey, let's say business is really good and you have ten employees, if they all ten park on site, then you really don't have parking for customers. That's kind of a problem.
Yeah, we can explore offset parking, you know, solutions if that does become a problem.
I think I'm a little bit more surprised that, especially with the amount of money that you're investing, that you don't have some sort of idea of how much you hope to make every month. To cover those expenses, I mean, I would think that a financial plan would have been. Done, not that you have to share it with us, but you certainly wouldn't open a business without some idea of what you hoped your income would be. To cover, you know, the expenses that you obviously have, so that, that surprises me. Um, do we have any other questions in the audience? Did you wanna go up front?
My name is, uh. Reverend Roger Fritz. I've, uh, lived, uh, directly behind the, uh, bank, it's now gonna become a dispensary if they're successful. Since nineteen ninety-four, I served Cedar Lane Unitarian University's church for eighteen years. Uh, during that period, we actually considered, uh, putting in a cell phone tower. And we did contact the residents who lived near the church and asked them how they felt about that before we asked for any permits or contacted anybody about, uh. Uh, building a tower, except the people who lived around there. And they said, we don't like that idea at all, and we, at the board, decided, no, we're not going ahead. We lost about twenty-five thousand dollars income a year for the church, but we decided it was very important that we have good relationships with our neighbors. I had in my eighteen years, no awareness that I had to give a report to the state about my church. Or to, um, get a permit from the county to have the church. Now, the church was founded in nineteen fifty-one, probably before all those regulations went into effect, we were probably grandfathered in. But it doesn't surprise me at all that the churches that have been founded in our area, in our neighborhood. Are made up of people who are not aware of these things, and now that they have been aware of them, I suspect. They will do their due diligence and do what needs to be done to fill out the correct forms. Um, I looked today at the, uh, website, uh, it's not easy to find for the county to get a permit and, uh, looked at what was necessary and. It's, they have to apply as a commercial building, uh, I assume that they're, they're in the process of doing that, I haven't talked to the churches, but. These, these people are, are, are religious people who are, uh, uh, trying to live ethical lives in our community and are trying to follow the rules, they are not. What did you call them earlier?
Bad actors.
Bad actors, but I, I have no idea where you got that idea, these are good people, they are not bad actors, they are proud citizens of our community. And I think we need to respect them. I have. Uh, four issues, first is safety, and I'll do this one at a time and then you can respond. Federal law prohibits possession of marijuana, likewise federal law bans distribution of trafficking in marijuana. This deters banks from offering services to cannabis dispensaries. By the way, this, all this statement I gave to the county council in June and they published it on their website, so you can find it there. The, 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 uh, banks deter from offering services to cannabis dispensary businesses due to the risk of federal prosecution and stringent regulatory compliant regulations. Requirements, consequently, dispensaries face limited access to banking services, forcing them to rely on cash transactions. This cash-only model results in security risks because dispensaries store large sums of cash onsite. Just like banks that steer clear of dispensaries, some security companies also shy away from partnering with such businesses citing the federal. E- illegality of marijuana. As a result, the armed security guards in cannabis dispensaries may have little training or experience in the task of, quote. Meeting firepower with firepower to deter, diffuse, or directly engage with any hostile force. That's a direct quote from an advertising, uh, website, advertising police to police dispensaries. This is a direct quote, a rental cop dispensary, no doubt, the cannabis lobby will claim that their guards will be highly trained professionals. And this might be true for the first few months, but what will happen in a year or two? Now, my question is, is it true that you're gonna store large amounts of cash and are, are you gonna have armed guards on duty?
So we do have a bank, it's Valley National Bank, uh, we do have a checking account. Um, yeah, we'll store cash onsite, I think fifty percent of transactions will likely be cash. Uh, we do take debit cards, we also take online ACH. We'll have weekly, if not twice a week, cash pickups to make sure we're not holding a lot of cash.
And we have armed security?
No.
No armed security. Second issue is noise, the building has this drive-in window, we've already talked about. And when the bank was there and I lived in the house directly behind the bank. We could hear clearly the transactions that were taking place at the drive-in window, we could listen in on people's conversations if we wanted to. The bank, however, closed at five PM. I hear now that this is going to be open until nine PM. I worry that it could be open even later and I worry about the noise coming from that facility. Which is less than a hundred yards from my bedroom window on my second floor. Is this gonna be open until nine PM and do you have any, any preparations at all to deal with the noise you're gonna be making?
So we're not sure what the hours of operations, we think we're closed at nine PM. In terms of noise mitigation, University Boulevard is very noisy with the existing traffic. Um, there may be some noise coming from transactions through the drive-through window, um, but I don't think you're gonna hear it in the bedroom.
I did with the bank and you saying it may be nine, but it could be later, eleven?
Uh, the regulations permit us to do that, but we're not gonna do it until eleven.
You're not gonna be open till eleven, is there anybody taking minutes?
If there is a record, there is a record.
Okay, says he's not gonna be open till eleven. Third is property values. If the dispensary opens. I fear the value of my home will decrease by thousands of dollars. I do have a proposal, I will trade my house with your house in Chevy Chase, you can live in my house and I'll live in Chevy Chase. And then you can be right next to your new business, if you're willing to do that, I'll withdraw my complaints. I don't plan to sell my house in the near future, but this. Loss of, of, of value of my house will have an impact on my retirement, I'm seventy-four years old. I just finished my, uh, last interim ministry, I hope, a month ago. I'm not a wealthy person and I don't like the idea of a business like this moving right behind my house. And my house losing great value financially. Do you have any idea what happens when dispensaries move next to homes in residential areas, what happens to the value of their homes? Have you done any research on that?
I guess is the answer is no on that.
So.
Have you?
No, I haven't. I'm, I'm, I'm trying to find out what's gonna happen to the value of my house if you open your business. I think it's gonna go way down by maybe a hundred thousand dollars.
I think there's a lot of factors that go into the present.
Yes. Lot of factors that go to the price of homes, but one of the factors is, do people wanna live behind a cannabis dispensary? And I think most people do not. Lastly, again, we've talked about this already, although my children are now grown, they were raised in this community. I can, I'm very concerned about having this building right next to a residential area with many, many children. Have you been to the bus stop in the morning and seen a large number of young children getting on buses to go to our schools? This is not the appropriate place to put a cannabis dispensary, right next to a residential area.
Okay, thank you. Alright, so just, um, uh, we have a lot of things on the agenda, I wanna keep going, no, no. I wanna keep going till around eight fifteen, so if we can try to keep it to that. Um, this, I remind everybody, this is not the hearing, there will be an opportunity in November to also give your testimony and I would encourage you. To do that as well, so, uh, who, Christine, you wanna?
I just wanna ask one to follow.
Okay, Todd, go ahead. Yeah.
Just, just for education, um. Will you explain like who actually, so Miss Remy, you're here. You haven't said anything yet, um, who is actually the CEO in charge, running it? Who's actually has this business, who owns it? And I know you guys talked about investors to the, to the MCA, who's investing, it's like who's, who's behind all this, right?
So Frank will be the CEO, the CEO of, of the daily operations. We're both owners and we have proud investors. Yes, go ahead. Oops, oh, one more, sorry.
So I, I did, I did, and she looked right at me.
I did, I'm sorry, that, that was looking at both of you.
Um, so I, I just wanted to thank you all.
Damon Street.
Christina Johnson, sorry, I missed that, Christina Johnson, I'm on prospect, I just appreciate you all coming because honestly. It's, it's not easy to get up here and introduce yourself to communities, a lot of times businesses do come into communities, as I said at the last meeting. Prior to coming in, but that's not always the case, um, and I think. The complexity that's associated with cannabis licensure and operationalizing your business is lost on most people, probably ninety. is lost on most people, probably ninety-five or more percent of people that hear about it don't understand it. So I think it is helpful. I think that um I'm sorry. Well, as someone said earlier, we're a community, so we try to be transparent and you know, it may not be in time, but I appreciate you being here and just wanted to go on record with stating that. And also, I would like all of us as community members to keep in mind, if they do get here, we can try to like community police, but I think the more that we work with them to integrate them into the community, the better off we all are. So if there are questions about traffic patterns, um, maybe we should work with you all and sit down and say, are you all encountering any challenges? What are you seeing? Because you're on the ground, you're here, we're not clocking what's happening every day, or some of the members of the community might actually see things that they may not catch while in the building. Um, it feels like that could be a proactive approach to actually working with you all and embedding you in the community. There are questions that you're not going to be able to answer, so if people have information on property values, because it's not something you typically look up when you operationalize a business necessarily, um, maybe you could get the information yourself. And then maybe say, this is what happens in the community, this is what we're concerned about. Um, but I just appreciate you all coming. Frankly, it's not easy. You're going to get peppered. It's fair, right? You're in the backyard of people, literally. Um, but I I just wanted to go on record by saying I appreciate you all coming, and I appreciate the council for digging into the details because it's not easy to do. Information is not readily available. There are things that are online that are not easy to find. And so we're just sort of a, we are a community of folks who are trying to figure out, and we're swimming through a swamp together on this one, and it it kind of stinks for everybody, but I think everybody's doing the best they can to figure it out. So that's just what I wanted to say, my observation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Westbrook? Yeah.
My name's Reverend Leslie Westbrook, and I have been uh ordained since nineteen seventy-three. And I've been very, very concerned about racial dynamics in our country and now here in Maryland because they're very important. We have a lot of things still to work out, and I think this is an example of it. Now, I want to say first of all that I am old. I'm not a child, so I go to bed early. And what's going to happen to me when at ten o'clock or eight o'clock they're running their thing through there, and there's nothing even written that limits the number of lights and so forth? There's just not there. They're, oh, we'll try to work it out, is what we're being told. Everything is after the fact. Very much after the fact. The first I heard about this was the late spring, and my backyard borders on this dispensary and this drive-through. I resent it, and you need to know, I'm talking to you, Mr. Whoever, that uh you're not going to have a happy community in which to have a dispensary. Now, maybe the money will matter to you enough that that doesn't, you don't care. But that's the first thing. The second thing is, I'm really concerned about these black, I thought they were black and Hispanic religious groups basically being pushed out because they do not know the laws. I did not know the law. My husband didn't know the law, and we've both been ordained since the seventies. We've been serving churches our entire life. And to watch this happening on because people want to make money, I'm not against marijuana at all. I'm against it being in a residential community. And the sap, the fact that this is going to be on University Boulevard somehow means it doesn't back up immediately to a residential community is blind. If you don't think that that's important. We're doing what we can to block this. We're not lawyers. These are issues of ethics, folks. Money and ethics. And we have to make a decision sometimes about which is more important. Money or ethics? Thank you so much for letting, you know me at this point. I've been here every single time I could be here. So thank you very much for giving me a chance to speak.
Absolutely, thank you. Actually, I was too. Okay, sure. Yeah, fine. We will ask people online too if they want to make it.
Christina Johnson, again, Prospect Street. I um, as an existing business owner, I I think it's important, and and as a member of the community, that we think about not having mutually exclusive things before us as we make decisions and as we sort of judge, uh, because it's judgment. And I heard you say it's ethics or it's money. You can, you can be a conscious capitalist. You can run your business in a mindful way, and you care, can care about the community in doing it. Their entire system set up is such, you know, B Corps are an example of that. Um, and I I would say that some of us are in this space to, yes, make money, yes, build legacy businesses, um, and do good in the community. And sometimes we are providing medicines to a community for ten years. This was a medical-only industry. It just converted to adult use. So I would just um, challenge us all to think about the fact that we may not know their intention of what they were trying to do unless we ask them about their values, mission statement, sort of envision, which I'm not sure if that came up in the meeting. I haven't heard that. But I do think that that matters. I don't know. I mean, you can, you can do good and do well. Um, the other thing is um, when we talk about bad actors, and I didn't make a statement about the bad actors. I bet you wish you didn't say that now, because now it's being brought up over and over again. But the point is, they weren't filing paperwork with the state, right? Had these business owners not filed paperwork with the state, everybody would be calling them a bad actor. They're being asked questions about things they didn't have to do to be a participant in business in the state of Maryland, much less Montgomery County, much less Kensington. So we're okay with churches not doing their job in looking up information on the internet and filing the way that they're supposed to, like every other operating entity in the state of Maryland. But we're not okay with him not knowing what's going to happen to property values or him not knowing what is going to happen when his establishment is put up. I don't know, maybe it's going to catch on fire. We don't know if people are going to reroute, park on the street, street, go somewhere else. I just think we should, we should call balls and strikes. And if we're really going to have people in and ask people to be part of the community, we might we, whether they're late or not to the sh- the sh- the show, we might want to treat everybody the same way. That that's, I just, you know, I we got to ask them questions that we would ask the same church members you in here, like, hey, are you filing your taxes? Or if you're not filing your taxes, if, are you registered this way, registered that way? Why didn't you register with the state? How long has this been up on the state's website? Didn't you know you were supposed to do this? Like, let's just try to approach this in a really equitable way, speaking of equity. Eh, as best we can. I mean, I don't know. I I don't have a dog in the fight. I just, I just feel like I would want people to be fair. It might sound like it, but I I don't. It's not my business.
Okay, thank you, Christina. Sure. Could I get you just to say your name for the record when you go up?
Alicia Rami, um, Crabtree Dispensary owner. Um, I just want to speak on you guys saying that we didn't come out in a community. We didn't come to meet you guys. Um, I own multiple businesses. Um, I have never gone out into the community before I opened the business. After, yes, we become a part of the community, we engage with the community, we are the community. We are here today because we found out it was an issue. We didn't know this from the beginning. But now that we know that it is an issue and it was brought to our attention, that's why we're here, to introduce ourselves.
I I became aware in March, and I've been in constant contact.
And he's been trying to get on the agenda.
Okay.
And we got put on in September. That's why we're here today.
Not not our agenda, but on the county.
On the county, yes, yes, I'm sorry.
Ours are easy to get on.
We are looking to be a part of your community, not to be an assore, but to add value to the community. And I think you guys think otherwise. You think that, you know, we're just going to be running some illegitimate business, and that's really not the case. It's it, it's similar to a pharmacy. You purchase and you leave. You leave with whatever you purchased. That's it.
You have to check online. Yeah.
Rebecca Rand, Farragut Avenue, again, still live there. Um. So I I think what Todd was about to say was that you've come in here tonight and you haven't had answers to questions, questions that um, sure, you may not have needed to do that, but to be a good member of the community or in be in good standing with the community as a business, these are all things that are really important to us. And I believe you were in our meeting the last time, and you had said that um you were there talking about the Cannabis Association, and you said that one of the things that they do is a lot of community outreach. And all of us that were here were shaking our head like no one reached out to us. This kind of just happened, and we talked to the town, we talked to each other, and we created a petition because that's, like we, Leslie said, we are not lawyers. This is what we could do. It was a, you know, um, eh, just, you know, from the ground up as neighbors to to let our voices be heard. And we, what we've heard tonight, eh, it just doesn't sound like you would be a good neighbor to us because you don't ha- you don't know what's going to happen with the parking. You don't know what's going to happen if your employees can't get a place to park. Are they going to park on the street in front of my house? I can tell you right now, that's not going to fly with neighbors. That's just not going to happen. So these are things that you you need to consider when you have um a a proposal for a business. That's what makes a good community member, and I think that's what we're all trying to say here tonight, is that yes, we love our businesses in town. Some of them have caused a lot of traffic that we're not happy about, but I think there are ways to get around that, you know, like we can talk to them and we can talk to the town, but we, that's the thing, we talk. And we we communicate with each other, and that's what makes a good community. You have not communicated with any of us at the town, like Mayor Tracy said, you haven't gotten on any of our agendas until tonight. So I I think, I think you might need to take a breath, take a beat, and just know that we're not going to change our minds. We really want a good community. We want to be able, have people to communicate with us and and to do good for um for all of us. We've lived there. I mean, Leslie, how long have you lived on Farragut? John, in in thirty years? Todd, ten, twelve, eight or nine? Mike? Um, I've been there, I think, twenty-four, twenty-five years, something like that. So maybe it's twenty-three. Um, so we're not going anywhere. And eh eh, when our neighbors move in, we welcome them. And of course, we would love to welcome a business. We're all about making Kensington better. But let's be honest, you have not been transparent. You have not done community research, and you haven't communicated with us. You haven't done the, your due diligence. I'm sorry, but that's how I feel.
Yeah, thank you. Do you, the Anderson family, want to say something?
I'm Catherine Anderson. I live next to to Leslie and Roger. We are but at the core of the um proposed property. And Ms. Rami, I did write to you um in summer. Um, I tried to write a gracious letter. I admire the work that you've done with your catering business and establishing the restaurant. I love crowds. I will come to Ram- Ramstown to have crowds. So I really tried to be gracious. You do not respond.
I'm sorry, I didn't get that.
I have to send it to you.
Please do. I absolutely would have responded to that.
I I am concerned by the attitude that I'm hearing. Well, I didn't hear, sorry, but but I did hear from you. I'm not much concerned for what you feel is not your business. But there are fifteen or twenty kids at that bus stop. So if somebody goes through your property and turns right and goes and goes through the do not enter sign, they're going to go past a school bus stop. Unless they first turn right on Farragut Avenue, which of course is controlled parking. You say that's not your problem. If it becomes a problem for your customers, it is your problem. And I I don't hear a sense of concern, either for your customers or for your neighbors, if we are to be your neighbors. You are dealing with a controlled such that it's not like having a bank, or a barber shop, or a dentist, or a real estate agent, which is what we currently have. They make no sound. They're not, and about the sound, which you were extremely cavalier about. University Avenue is is sound. We hear it. We use our backyards. We sit out there, all of us do. It's like a blur. I'm not right behind the bank, the way differences are. I could still hear every word of transactions from that window. And I remember thinking, hmm, do these customers know that their financial information? I, it seemed curious to me. So when you think that it will not be any noisier than University Avenue, you are absolutely not correct. This sort of lack of communication is a grave concern.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson, go ahead.
John Anderson, very good afternoon. Um, I would um um encourage the town, this is really just kind of looking forward to both to the county and the town, to really seriously consider a underput rule. I know it's not in force now, and this is watering the bridge, but, you know, um, you know, not too long into our, to our tendency at Farragut Avenue, there were I I remember seeing two Montgomery County finest with weapons drawn, going down our side yard. Eh, a bank had just been hit. I think it was the one not eh, one a block away from you. Um, and they were looking for the perpetrator. Um, a cash-only business in a residential neighborhood, especially a bank even, you know. Um, someone on foot is really, is going to disappear into a residential neighborhood. It's not like a C V S parking lot where you're dodging between cars or between buildings and not a lot of landscaping. Here we have six-foot fences, we have sheds, um, a really well-planned robbery. Um, jump to sit, jump for this six-foot fence, jump our eh, twice and go behind our shed. Uh, jump the neighbors, do a quick change behind our shed, change into a different costume, um, go over to Lexington, jump into a car that's implanted there or stationed there, and use the way, you know, calmly, at twenty-two miles an hour. That's all I want to say. It's just, it's not, you know, having this kind of a cash business and people who may be trying to escape from law enforcement, there's so much cover compared to a residential neighborhood, a Safeway parking lot. You know, we're not a Safeway or C V S parking lot. That's why I'm going to say, there's really no response.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Anderson. Um, I want to go online now. Uh, Karen, Craig, you have a question or a comment?
Yeah, I had a comment. Um, I live uh close by um Plyer Smell Court. Um, I do not have a property that is adjacent to a commercial property, and I and I definitely, you know, feel for the people who who did, you know, choose to live very close to University Boulevard. Um, at the same time, I, you know, I think that some of their concerns um can hopefully be be mitigated maybe with white noise, you know, machines. We certainly use that in the office space to keep um noise from traveling or some additional, you know, trees or screen sheds um and lights. But otherwise, as a parent with uh two eight-year-olds, I just wanted to say that I'm not at all concerned about having a dispensary in our community. Um, I think that the people of Maryland, you know, voted. I think that having legalized business does kind of take a lot of the stigma away and keeps children from interacting uh with drug dealers where they may be introduced to even more dangerous uh drugs that are concerning. And I think that when you've normalized, just as the liquor store across the street, responsible use that is just for adults, that it kind of helps to teach children a lesson. Um, I also just want to say that while a lot of the comments um in this forum have been very critical, and perhaps you might feel it is very negative, I don't know that all of the residents in this community are as concerned um as the residents on Farragut and probably would welcome your business. I certainly do, and so I just wanted to add a little bit of maybe a a bit more positivity. I think that um, you know, I can appreciate as a, as a new business owner, you did your due diligence. You thought you were buying a or building in a place that had been commer-, you know, previously commercially active. You probably didn't even think about the ramifications. You probably didn't even think about the ramifications. You know, you explained how difficult it is to cite a business like this. I think that you've learned a lot of lessons in terms of the sort of research you need to do about the communities that you're going into for your next location. Should you be successful and open more locations? And I, and I think that's a great learning process and I'm glad you did finally make it to a town council meeting and look forward to future engagements. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Karen. Anybody else online have a question? I don't see any other hands. Okay, I do want to kind of wrap this up. I've asked our town attorney who's here, Sue Ellen Ferguson, to kind of explain the next step, particularly for our residents. So Sue Ellen, would you explain how the Court of Appeals, what their options are, they want to?
It's the Board of Appeals.
Board of Appeals.
And obviously, an appeal has been filed by the business owners based on the denial that, that they received. And the, the town has no control over any of these proceedings. Town does not have zoning. And so you use this as an opportunity and we're invited to, to ask questions. If you wish to present opposition or more information, you should go to the Board of Appeals. I'm so sorry. The, they may require that you sign up ahead of time to testify. So you should check on that as to whether they do, if you do intend to comment. They may require that if you want to be a party of record to, to talk, you need to do that a certain period of time beforehand. So you should double check with that. But otherwise, you, you'll be free to make the comment to the folks who actually do have an opportunity to make a decision on this as opposed to the town, which does not.
Is that the pre-hearing or the hearing hearing? There's like two ones, right?
There are. And the notice that is out there should state, or just.
It was attached to the agenda.
And, yeah, and so the pre-hearing submissions by the parties. And so that is to prepare to go forward. It's generally not going to take public comment at that one. It'll be the, the hearing itself where they're going to take public comment. So the, that's your option to take. And if you actually want to speak to someone who has some authority to do something about this one way or the other, that's where you should go.
If you have a question, you have to go upfront. I'm sorry, because it's recorded. So we'll welcome your question, but you have to go.
Do you or maybe somebody else on, on the, in our group, know what happened to the proposal to pass a restriction of a hundred or fifty feet from a residential zone that was before the council in June? I could not find any information about whether or not.
Right, so.
So it's Gabe Albernaz's bill.
So County Councilmember Gabe Albernaz introduced a zoning text amendment. In the state cannabis law, it says the local jurisdiction may, if they choose, put in a zoning restriction, not only putting a setback on sensitive areas, places of worship, parks, schools, but also a hundred feet from residential. So Councilmember Albernaz at the County Council level put in a zoning text amendment, drafted that to do just that. It has not gone anywhere. There is a lot of questions around the, exactly how that would be administered because of how the state law is written. It's a very complicated and entangled piece of legislation. So until it goes before the council and it is approved by the council and it passes, it, it, there is not currently a one-hundred-foot setback from residential.
You have to go, I know it's.
Just a clarification.
Okay. We'll repeat it.
It's just a note.
Sorry.
You, you said that the county, that the Kensington Town Council doesn't have any authority, you know, and no decision. However, is there conversation with the county and any of the Kensington council members about feelings about all of this and their own thoughts about? Is there anything that fall in the way of a communication? I thought the letter was very clear that you sent. But I, I'm just wondering, okay, you don't have the authority. But is there any soft pressure?
Board of Appeals can only hear matters in the hearing. Otherwise, it's an ex-party communication and that's not allowed. When parties go in front of the Board of Appeals, everyone gets an even playing field. And anything that the board is allowed to consider must happen in that room. So these council members are prevented from putting pressure on another fact-finder and law-applying body.
So does that mean that the town council can't even vote at that hearing? Any members, are you all totally cut out?
Well, I'm sure you could go to watch. Right, but you had the opportunity to actually give testimony.
At the, at the pre-hearing?
Not at the pre, at the hearing.
Yeah, the one after that.
But you could too, if you wanted to.
Not to give testament. Oh, as an individual you could, but not representing the town. Yeah, as an individual.
Sure.
Okay, well, we've got past the time. I hope, has everybody felt like they've gotten to be heard?
A closing comment. This is truly directed by Mr. Hayes and Ms. Rami. First of all, thank you for coming. My feelings, I do wish you'd come earlier. It's not required, but it is how we do things here. I hope you take away a few things. One, this is how, these are questions that we ask of every business that's open, right? It is not because of what your business is, it's because of how your business may operate and the ripple effect, right? That's why questions, my questions aren't about what you're selling. My questions are, how are you going to park it? How are you getting, how are you going, people going to move? How, you know, what's the traffic patterns? These are the same questions we ask whether you're a business serving alcohol or a jewelry store, you know, or you're not a Chick-fil-A, right? I can't even imagine what would happen if Chick-fil-A came in and they sell chicken sandwiches. So I hope you take away, the questions here are how your business will operate. Because it gets to the bigger point, which I want to echo something that I heard Christina said. It, it's about community. I hope what you take away tonight, that this is how we are as a community because we care deeply about our community. And that includes our business community. We are fiercely protected of our business community. We wrap our arms around them to prop them up and make sure that they do well. But also when bad things happen, we rally around our business community. Being a part of this community, it means something. I know other, like, to say, hey, I'm a part of this community. When you open your business, you will absolutely become a part of this community. But part of that, that back and forth and that, that communiteness is operating in good faith, right? And so when things aren't working and the town comes to you or community members raise their voice, I hope that you hear like, hey, yeah, how can we work together to best operate in the community, right? There are parking concerns, we'll come and talk to you. If there are traffic concerns, we'll come and talk to you. If there's trash or noise, we'll come and talk to you. And it's about working together as a community. But I have appreciation that you are here tonight. You sought to be on the agenda. We recessed in August, so we didn't have it in August. You have stayed. You have attempted to answer every question as best you can. I realize you don't have all the answers, but I appreciate the time that you put towards it. The, you know, I hope you take away, and I will just, I know I'm repeating myself, that, you know, we find Kensington to be a very special place to live, to work, for businesses to locate. We hope that if and when you open, you understand how important that is. And that this has just given you a little taste of, you know, what we are looking for with our, our business partners.
Rebecca, what? Oh, okay. All right, I think we're good and thank you very much for coming in. And we will continue on with our meeting.
You're all welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting.
Got some good ordinances and regulations coming up, guys. You sure? Wait, where's everybody going? All right, well, thank you all for coming. Sure, thank you. Okay, so let's move on. We will do council. I've been sleeping well lately. Council reports.
Uh-oh.
So who wants to start?
I can start.
Yeah, go ahead.
You can help me with sustainable Kensington.
Forgot their purse.
Uh-oh. Maybe she's just talking to them.
Oh, maybe she is, yeah.
Yeah. Probably got her phone or her key, so they should be.
Heard of that. Just a brief update, the Parking Task Force met recently. You may know from past reports or from our notes that we're working on an RFP to enlist the support of a consultant to help analyze our current parking situation and identify potential solutions. Our next step is to meet with Matt and we're figuring out the schedule to do that now. But one of the things that we will need to determine is how much we can allocate for this effort from this year's budget versus this next year's budget. Because at least from the market research that Connor's AI reveal.
I did it.
We did not.
AI assisted.
Money aside.
You know, it looks like seventy-five thousand to a hundred and fifty thousand, whereas I think our placeholder and the budget are closer to fifteen to twenty at most. So just want to flag, that's an issue that we'll need to figure out. We have a few other things to talk through. To help with that, some of the committee members are identifying hotspots in town that have come up in previous conversations where the, so that we can have that included as part of the RFP package. And related to that, we did at our last meeting have some discussion. We did hear from residents in and around Baby Cat that the work we did before the St. Patrick's Day event to try to direct people to park in other places and to have Annie available to be on site that day and checking for violations seemed to help, seemed to make a difference. And so there was a little bit of discussion around exploring the possibility of having weekend enforcement, particularly when we know there's going to be a lot of people in town, like train show or, you know, all the things that happen here. So I just wanted to preview that for the council and see if there are any other questions you'd want the, the Parking Committee to take up related to those matters.
I'm coming on that too. One, I talked to Carrie and Sam, continue about getting the map on their website at Baby Cat, correct? So.
Well, they've been busy doing other things.
And then just a nugget of thought, if, because yeah, I saw a lot of the other jurisdictions that I was, you know, in the research. Now, they were larger, had different, there's different components. But, you know, I don't know if there's a way perhaps with the RFP to have them phase it so that we know what, you know, use the money in this FY and plug the next FY.
Yeah, we did talk a little bit about that.
Did do it in, yeah, phases and, yeah, where you could start, spend it, and then the next budget year comes in, you can pay the benefits.
Yeah.
Okay, well, thank you for following up for Baby Cat. I'll talk to you about that as well, just to know exactly what they have, what they will change, because there were a couple of different things with the map.
Yep.
Okay, so that's Parking Task Force. I'll do Kensington Can business update very briefly before we go to Sustainable Kensington. I did go to the Kensington Can meeting yesterday and wanted to just hear what they were working on, gave them a few updates on things happening in the town, and discussed with them the possibility of promoting by local leading into the holiday season. They've experimented in the past with different, remember the stamps last year? There are some tweaks that would need to be done, but I think there is interest in collaborating. And one of the specific ideas that they raised, they had a sample of another community, the Hamden neighborhood in Baltimore, where the pamphlet they handed out, think of our Explorer Kensington, you know, Business Highlight, had a map that showed the business locations and then showed like where you could park and all of that. And there's interest in creating something like that. So I said I would follow up with.
Like, they're talking about something online or are they talking about something?
Physical.
Physical.
Looking at what's online now, for Explorer Kensington, it's a nice directory because it is by, you know, type of business, right? And the map that is there is an embedded Google Maps. So they just take whatever organically comes up. It doesn't have the added ability to do the things that we would want to do in terms of directing people. And the reason they, they share that they would like a physical printed out, even though I know it instantly can become outdated and you have to do that.
Well, that's the biggest, that, it's not just annual, it's almost could be, you know, bi-monthly and really.
But the, but just to, to share, the, the thinking was that often they're talking to customers who are visiting, who ask like, we're going to get something to eat or what else is here? And they're like trying to direct them and draw out how to do it. If they had a map, it'd be great.
And, and we have had those brochures that we've, you know, provided, but either the, I mean, it's very frustrating because A, they don't stay current. And then, you know, the, you drop them off to the, to the people and they don't tell you they have any, you know, they've lost them or they don't put them out or they ran out but never asked for more. And I mean, you know, who's that contact person? So trying to manage that, I would be okay with it if Kensington Can managed it. And, you know, we provide them with, you know, a thousand brochures and then they distribute them around.
Right, okay.
Yeah, that's, that would be okay. And then they, they let Carrie Anne know that things change. Because sometimes, especially in the antique market, you have no idea who's changeover business.
That's in the smaller shops, yeah. Okay, but it is something we could explore and I know things have been tried before with printing.
Yeah, but I mean, we, we could do it.
There are also, I'll talk to you about this Connor later, interested in identifying speakers to present on using AI in your business. I volunteered you. Okay, moving on to Sustainable Kensington, Nate and I met with the team last week. There are a number of different things in process. The one thing I wanted to share here, and I'll let Nate fill in on some of the other updates, is that we are exploring, Al is really leading this effort, but we're exploring the possibility of bringing Zipcar to Kensington. And we talked with Matt, back to Kensington, because apparently it was here before. It was somebody remembered seeing them before near the train station.
Were they just parked there? They were using it and got it from somewhere else?
No, I think, you don't remember.
I don't remember.
I don't remember. It could have been, I mean, I've been here a long time, but.
I've been here even longer.
I'm getting old, I don't remember.
But we're going to get it, maybe establish it, yeah.
So, yeah, so we are going to move forward with exploring that idea for broader awareness. There is an agreement, Zipcar has with the county, that we could potentially piggyback on. So we're going to start the process of talking to the county and understanding better how it works and what the options might be for Kensington. We're going to first explore the potential of doing it here at Town Hall. And then Matt had shared that eventually doing it maybe in the M and T lot closer to the train station might make sense. So these talks are underway. And Nate, you want to fill in on the other items?
Sure, see if I missed anything. So we will have two articles in the Town Journal. One is on the electric vehicle analysis and some of the findings from some work that Al and Alkar Bridget Hill did. So that'll just be an update on what the, what, what was identified for potential locations, some of the issues that we're considering, including maybe still doing an ordinance for EV charging. Then the other article will be our food waste collection program update, where we'll hopefully be able to answer some of the questions that have been coming in while we've been polling neighbors, kind of just walking around, talking to neighbors, and then also to come in on the listserv. And then also we hope to report, oh, we're going to be meeting with DevCo to get some answers on some questions. Mainly a lot of the questions are really centering on, I don't get why I can't do this. It's compost. You know, I did this with compost crew. I can't do this with this food waste.
It's also the paper, right?
Paper, yeah, mainly paper and just things that people just can't get used to not putting in the compost because now everyone's conditioned to do certain things. So we're going to really try to suss out, can we just tell them just to treat it like compost for the most part? Like they're treating compost crew. Is there any significant?
Our thing has been, if you can eat it.
True, but people, people. True, but people, people worried about paper towels. People worried about coffee filters and coffee grinds.
I always told you could put in coffee filters.
It was listed as something that was.
So this is our point. So why can't you put in a soil paper towel? So that's why we're going to try to get to the bottom and just try to simplify with the guidances. So that it'll pick up a little bit easier and most of the people who are providing feedback aren't upset. They're just identifying areas where we can improve. People are, think the totter is too large, right? Like these are things that we're going to answer questions around.
Seriously can't come passing on.
I don't mind putting out a light consol totter.
Yeah. So we might give some tips about that have been offered to through the, through the dialogue that we've seen and been a part of. So the other thing we hope to report is the tonnage, how much, give some numbers on what has been collected, what amount of food waste has likely displaced the trash a collection and just try to get the numbers for the first couple of months and report on those. So those are two of the things that'll come out. Hopefully the articles will be finished in the next two days. Then we have, just wanted to have a quick update because it relates to Sustainable Kensington and Public Works building design process because we want to make sure that we've identified who from Sustainable Kensington will be tracking that to make sure it's got a clean design integrated into the design process. So do you have an update?
Well, we have not, Pepco is still, we've sent them money in order for them to, do you want to go ahead and explain that so well? The funding that we sent them to.
Okay, so we've reached out to Pepco. There is an actual form we had to fill out. It included a fifteen hundred dollar fee to apply. We sent that about two weeks ago. We have not heard back from them. It may take up to six weeks to get the response. It is basically our request to acquire the property. We sent them the assessment with the assessment value. I'm sorry, yeah, no, this is appraisal, appraisal with the appraisal value. So we're waiting to hear back from Crystal and her team at Pepco. With regards to the actual construction and planning and design, it's kind of on pause until we get a little further along with the second Pepco property.
Yeah, I think that was the understanding that until we actually purchased the project, that we just kind of put it on hold, which I feel bad for our public works guys, but we are pushing it. So it may be that the decision is just to have someone on from Sustainable Kensington.
Yeah, okay.
And they would be assigned once we get to that point. I wouldn't hate to put somebody on now and then.
No, that's good to know. It's good to know this timeline. So that's, we just wanted to make sure we were thinking in budgetary time. Good. So the last thing is that I know that Catherine came to talk to you about the potential for the town supporting this community-supported agricultural agriculture location. We discussed it at our last meeting. And there was general support for moving forward with researching it further. I know that some of the concerns that were raised was what does it do to the farmers market vendors? Where do we place it? Can we actually have it as a secure location and so on? So we actually discussed these issues. And I think there's pretty general idea that it wouldn't probably displace, you know, it might be twenty some people participating in something like that. And that it would be a potential complement to the community. There were a lot of people who spoke at the, at our meeting saying, look, they don't, they don't buy food at the farmer's market or produce. They get it somewhere else. They still go to the farmer's market. A lot of people coming to the farmer's market from out of town that would probably not have access to this CSA and so on. So there were some ideas raised about where to put it and we discussed, we said, well, before we get too far ahead, let's just put it on the table for a council meeting where we can just raise it in one of our town update and have a discussion about it to see if there's a general agreement that we can move forward with researching it further and exploring the options. Because we've done some, or the, the committee's done some research. It's not, I mean, I think fairly extensive to which, which different services we can use, what is available, where there's room to, to place another one. But the sense is that there's a, a kind of a gap in where CSAs are offered. And this could be a benefit to the community that we could offer. I don't know if you want to say anything else, Anne? About the conversation.
No, we can.
Well, can I just make a comment on that? I just, I, I have no objections to the, to this happening, but I'd like to see it be done kind of privately. Kind of like what the compost crew was doing where people just got their subscription and they were handling it on their own or as a, kind of as a group who are all part of compost crew. I mean, I don't want staff to have to deal with this at all. I mean, if it's dropped off, you know, nineteen buckets of fruit is dropped off somewhere at somebody's house, that's great. If it's dropped off here, that's not great because who's, who's taking care of it? I don't need the name across the street saying, why are there animals eating, you know, all those vegetables that were left sitting in the driveway? Or the crew coming in can't get stuff out of the garage because there's ten buckets of fruit sitting in the way or vegetables. I mean, I don't think we should be putting that on our staff.
No, I don't, I don't think you, I don't think we should either. I don't think that was discussed if I remember correctly.
I mean, if it's delivered to your driveway, great, then it's your responsibility to get rid of it.
About how you would have to have a management plan and.
Yeah, I mean, no. Or when it's still, but even if it's delivered on a Wednesday afternoon, everybody leaves at four o'clock. Public Works has gone at three, staff has gone at four. They should not be hanging around waiting for somebody to pick up their vegetables.
No, and nor is that how it's run at houses. So I was participating in one, I think of a couple of other people on the committee where, where it's basically a drop location and it's, it's self-service. You, they, the only thing that.
Nate's out of town or he forgets.
No, but this, this is what we started to discuss and this is why we said, let's talk the council about it before we get too far ahead. The issues were around, okay, if we have a location, do we have people who are participating that would agree to volunteer to do it? Can it be out of the way of the town crew? I think the idea was to kind of put it.
Right outside this lower entrance.
Whatever we do, pop it in there. But these are the questions that we need to see if it's actually viable. So they, they wanted to do more research and see if we could put up a model that would not affect the town. Having to put a lot on them only to offer the location as a public space to come and get it. And that could be supported. If it's supported by the town, then it's something we could also count towards.
Doesn't a private individual do it in Garrett Park?
It's, it's often at private homes, but I don't know universally at private homes.
So there is, I, I would be very open. We have, we have some concerns about this, obviously. There is a private drop location in Garrett Park right now. One of the feedbacks that I got from Catherine was that she stopped because it was, I didn't, either too much food or things she wasn't using. So that's a concern for us. You know, do we end up with it? What do we do? We have a small staff. Where is it located? One of the options was the army garage, which is not possible for us. You know, even under the cove, it's still public access to the cable station. You know, are we blocking it? Are we going to have twenty boxes of food?
And they had the train show and the Boy Scouts were outside selling, you know, hot dogs.
One of the questions I had, one of the questions was that it was local, but it's not. It's out of Lancaster. All the farms are out of Lancaster. It's not like they're Howard County farms or Frederick County farms. So it's not like we're helping our local farmers. There's just concerns that I had and questions that I have. I'll be more than happy to maybe do this outside a council meeting, kind of. If you guys want to ease my concerns about this. But yeah, there's definitely some things that I don't want to be involved in. I don't think it necessarily, you know, is, is worth the staff time right now. You know, maybe if it works with a private resident and grows or something, maybe we can look at it. We just have a lot of things on our plate right now and I just don't want to get bogged down with a weekly drop of food.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I understand the staff capacity.
Yeah, obviously we don't know a whole lot, so our concerns are high. You know, the thing, the more we learn, we might, you know, feel differently. But right now it's not something that, you know, honestly, I'm, I'm interested in pursuing or being responsible for a town hall.
Well, thank you for sharing the primary concern was the staff capacity and some of the operational issues. And we can take that back to the committee, but what I'm taking from this conversation is it's okay to still explore it, knowing these are the concerns. And then we'll see what's viable.
And if there's somebody who wants to, you know, privately take it on, they're, they're available and can or find a substitute if they happen to be away or something like that.
Yes, my, my question, just because this is the first I'm hearing of it is, is it, and this I think is where you're explaining, right? Is, is it dropping it on Tom property, but the whole program is managed by volunteers? By some sort of private CSA.
We haven't gotten that far, but that is an example of what came up.
Or is it, is it, hey, it's going to be at a private residence managed by the CSA members or hey, we'd love to have it dropped at, you know, a town space, but we would still manage it where it's not a staff issue. It's, so if there's concerns, right? The CSA food person's calling a phone tree that is the members.
It's going to be us. It's always us. Where, if there's an issue with the EV charger, it's us. If there's an issue outside of town, it's us. You know, it's just, we don't want to be responsible for a weekly food drop for twenty plus people. It's just, like I said, there's a lot of things we don't know. So my concern is high. The more I learn, you know, that might change. But it's something that we can figure out and continue to talk to.
Yeah, that sounds good. So we will raise those concerns or bring them back to the committee and just continue trying to get answers. And if it doesn't work, then it's no model that actually addresses those concerns.
We have, I mean, we have a lot of options between, you know, besides, yeah, what, no, but we have the, I mean, we have the farmer's market. We have the, yeah, not churches. We have the fire, I heard you. We have the farmer's market. We have the pop-up farmers thing at Medina now that's coming in once a week. And then we have, you know, I mean, Safeway sells vegetable, fruit and vegetables. It's not necessarily local. But, you know, most people get them from there. So it's not like we're some desert here of not being able to get fresh food. So anyway, okay, I just, my main concern was I don't want staff involved with this at all.
Got it.
They should not be involved. And you know, if something's dropped here, people will assume that staff is involved.
Okay. All right. We'll, we'll take this back. I think that's it. No, I do. I have, I have one more thing. I'm, I'm filling in for Stuart because he is now the co-chair of TBAS and.
He ran a good, good meeting.
Yeah, it was good. First meeting was really good. So the Walktober events this year are going to be a month-long relatively hands-off by the, by the sense of it's not going to be a guided tour. It's not going to be using the coupons for businesses. It's not going to be how we ran it before. It's going to be more of a self-guided where we're, they're going to sponsor, basically have a walk sponsored per week where there's going to be a map posted. You follow the map, do the walk, take some photos, provide feedback as you're on the walk. Express what you, what you liked, when you didn't. There'll be ways of interacting with QR codes. I think they're going to put signs up along the different, several places where I heavily walked around town with walking facts. You know, did you knows, types of, types of things. And the four themes are, the first week's going to be on historic KHS walk to do, basically taking the maps we already have and having people celebrate Walktober by using those. So it's the historic KHS map. The second one, as I understand, it's going to be the art walk map. The third one will be the house and garden tour map, which is similar to the KHS one, but it's, it's a very specific route they're developing. And then the last one would be the parks walk to go around scare parks. We may also add one or integrate. Pick your favorite shortcut or take, you know, take a photo of you using your favorite shortcut or whatever. So that'll be all, all virtual. And we'll, we'll, they have to get a paragraph in. I don't think they told Carrie Anne. I think they may have missed it. But they might want to try to get a little blurb into our code somewhere in the Town Journal. So I raised that to them today when I, when I heard this.
Okay, okay.
So that's Walktober.
She, they've got time. If they get it in, yeah. But we can stretch that up a little bit. Carrie Anne did put together an arts walk. I put, posted in the kiosk. Not really a map, but it's a list and it tells you where everything is. There is a map. Yeah, there's a map online, but I mean, she just put together another list that we put in the kiosk.
Okay, that's it for me. Thank you.
Okay, great. Connor?
I'll start. I'm sure you will go through a full list, but just a couple of thank yous and, and way to goes. First, the Back to School Block Party was awesome. Yeah. So I'll throw a fact to you, if you want to do thank yous to everybody, you kind of people involved. But it just, I was there for the, you know, the first half, two thirds of it. It's just such a great event. I was in charge of only the weather, so you're welcome.
I did the weather.
But I will say from my, my kid's perspective, right, came in and, you know, all of a sudden it, as designed, this soccer game got started and I could not pull my kids away even though we needed to. And, and so a big thank you. I know the crew put together those goals, which are awesome.
There's a little grumbling on that, but they, they did it. They got it done.
But I want them to know how awesome the event was and, and all of the people, the kids playing and just having a blast. It's kind of hard to do without the goals. You know, big shout out especially to Marco. They're, you guys had a little unforeseen waterfront property. Water issue, water element to deal with, but you know, everybody who just jumped in and just made it happen anyways. But it was great. It was such a great event.
Well, it was nice too that the Marco more or less did it on his own, but he got the, the fence up along the, the water and they asked to keep it up. And as long as the stakes, the stakes are good. They, they're, that was from leftover from playground. So that worked out really well.
Uh, second is Labor Day was again, okay, thank you to the mayor for the weather. Labor Day was great to the town staff who worked so hard on that, to apparently now the whole Marini family.
The sisters.
Send thanks to Haley and Jordan and all the volunteers who came.
Lisa, Lisa.
It was just a, honestly, one of my best ones in the ten years I've been, you know, or nine years on the council. Just weather was great. Golf cart, it's always nice. But it just was such a great event. And the, the festival now, I know it's more, it's always more, but it was an awesome festival. Even, you know, can't say enough good things about it. So just, I know it is a labor of love. I know it can be a labor of frustration at times and I hope you know how appreciated it was because I, the amount of people who I know live nearby, but not necessarily in the town, who catching them in conversation with other people, just the pride of, you know, being a part of Kensington. Like this is the small town. This is where I live. The, the grandmother of our, the, from Spear Club, who was like in tears because it reminded her of the little town in upstate New York where she grew up and how she wishes her daughter and granddaughter lived in the town. I mean, that's, I mean. Put that on a bumper sticker.
It's our, yeah, this is the biggest event that our staff actually puts it all together. All our other events are handled by a sponsor. Not that staff doesn't, you know, participate. We can talk about the car show, about, you know, dissipation and the upcoming Kensington Volunteer Fire Department's 100th anniversary. But yes, the staff really puts the entire thing together and you guys did a phenomenal job. I know somebody on the listener tried to give me all the credit, but that, other reasons. Back in. Yeah. Anyway, so it was, it was great that, that the staff is the, the reason why we had such great events. So thank you. Thank you all.
A couple of other updates. Kenmont Pool is holding a community yard sale and electric vehicle event on Saturday, September 27th from nine AM to one PM. Rain date would be Sunday. Mary Beth Myers from the town is one of the points of contact if you would like to get a little stall for doing the community yard sale. But they're really also working hard to bring actual EV owners and anybody who wants to know about EVs without having the pressure of going to a sales room and talking to a salesperson. You just want to sit in it. You want to talk about it. You want to, you know, get real life experience or, or stories of like mile and range anxiety. There'll be a number of different types of models there. It's open to everybody in the community. Come on up.
I was going to suggest, if you want to see a lot of gas guzzlers, you could go to the car show.
Do you know the point of contact for the EV?
Andy Fraser.
Okay.
Yeah. So Al, that would be Andy Fraser is the president of the Kenmont Pool. If you need his contact information, just let me know.
Thank you.
He is the one who specifically cornered me and made sure that I.
Excellent.
Get the, the announcement. On August 27th, the mayor and Nate and I met with MCPS and DGS at HOC with HOC staff to take a tour of the former Kensington Elementary, what is the HOC headquarters in Kensington off of Dietrich. Because HOC is in the progress of moving out. Their new headquarters in Silver Spring is under construction, about to be delivered. Couple of things that we learned are that while the HOC is planning to move, most likely by the end of the calendar year, like December, they're still going to be in the building through the first quarter of the year because they have to take equipment out and they, while they're ready to move staff. I mean, they've got a lot of electronics and servers and other things that they'll need time to, to move out.
It's a huge building.
It is much bigger than you think. And then the question is what comes next? So the Department of General Services, DGS for the county is. So the, uh, Department of General Services, D G S for the county is in charge of what comes next. There's a very detailed process. Kind of the right of first refusal goes to Montgomery County Public Schools. Who are in attendance and are well aware and, you know, are looking at it for all sorts of different options, whether that's, uh, pre K and the Blue Ribbon Commission. Um, whether that is swing space for administration to allow them to do temporary officing, you know, to just look at their, their master plan. For C I P as it happens to be a C I P plan year for them. Um, everybody is very tightly connected on timelines to be aware of this. Our main concern to them is what happens in the interim? If there is not an occupant in the building, uh, or if M C P S doesn't want it, what is D G S's plan to get a short term occupant?
Um. He was pretty, the one thing he seemed to be clear about was that the eight, he didn't have any agencies that needed space.
Correct.
Seemed to be very clear about.
So Greg Austin said, from the executive committee standpoint, nobody needs it. So if M C P S doesn't need it. Then. Nobody else in the county needs it. It, it, it'll go to the next phase of it. But M C P S. You know, I, I don't want to read tea leaves. Get the sense that there's a good chance they will make use of it. They're just figuring out. How to make use of it immediately. Um, even if there were a gap in M C P S's need. What was interesting to find out is that there is actually quite a demand for short term tenancy. They have people that are contacting him constantly for shorter term durations. And there's a good chance that if M C P S felt they didn't need this for a year or two, they could find an interim. Um, you know, tenant who would also be a, you know, the onsite like management of it. So our. What's really great, uh, the mayor conveyed this with D G S, Greg Austin is, hey, at every stage. The town would like to meet, you know, to be a stakeholder so that we can talk about what happens with the skate park, what happens with the green field, what happens with the basketball court. What is available for public use? Who's going to, you know, trees and cutting grass and just general welfare of the building. So.
I felt it was, I felt good that there was an acknowledgement that we do have a stake in the property, but we do own.
Yes.
A portion of one of the lots. So that was the first time I think Greg has ever acknowledged. Sanford and that we do indeed have a stake in this. So, um. Anyway, so that felt good. And there was a lot of assurances that, you know, was the building sits empty, it will be taken care of. And hopefully it won't sit empty for too long. So, but at this point. We are really needing, uh, H O C to get that final date of when they are going to be moving. And then I think the C I P is in October. So if we see, um, M C P S putting something in the C I P for that space. That would be, would be good too.
So that was in front of us all very transparently. D G S is saying, hey, they have to officially send the letter to kick off. The process and the timeline of the process and M C P S saying, well, our C I P is in October. So.
Get a move on.
Get, you know, H O C, it would be, since you know you're moving out and, and in the interest to acknowledge the letters in draft.
Right.
So, um, you know, we will continue to update the community as we, as this process moves forward. Um, Kensington, our sector plan, which was, you know, officially adopted in two thousand and twelve. Is up for what they call a minor master plan amendment. It, so county planning has to get a budget together to help. Look at what has transpired over, you know, since its last passing. And now that there is a new general plan for the county. How do we want to update the Kensington Sector Plan in light of the new, um, Thrive twenty fifty plan? So we have an initial, uh, just planning meeting with, this, this is going to be redundant, but a, a planning meeting about the minor master amendment. With the county planning office. So, uh, the mayor and town manager, um, myself and Nate will meet with planning. To really set the timeline and agenda and, um, the pro, the plan is to incorporate the, the development review board. And then the community meetings that go into a minor master plan.
And we're meeting in October.
October sixth. Yep, this is a zoom meeting.
Yeah.
Um, next, uh, just a couple, two, I got two. Those, we were on these says. Sorry to give these brief. The last two are just M C P S updates. So boundary study analysis for the reopening of Woodward High School. Is moving into the second phase. In the first phase, they presented out the first set of options. Those were reviewed. We've talked extensively about that. Then with all of the community feedback, they are to generate a second round of options. Those second round of options are expected on or around September twenty fourth. They have already set the dates for the, um, public, uh, community meetings around these. So there are a series of virtual meetings on Zoom on Monday, October sixth. There is a meeting from eleven to twelve. There's a meeting from twelve P M. to one P M. There's a meeting from six thirty to seven thirty P M. And there is a meeting from seven thirty to eight thirty P M. There's then another virtual meeting on Thursday, October ninth, from seven to eight P M. There are zoom links, um, I will, you know, they're published on the county, on, on C P S's website. We can. Put them into, I'll get them to you. Um, there's also a section of in-person meetings for Woodward specifically. Um, Tuesday, October seventh, from six thirty to seven thirty P M. At Bethesda Chevy Chase High School. There is a session. They're doing back to back sessions at B C C. So one is from six thirty to seven thirty P M. And then they will go again and do it from seven thirty to eight thirty P M. Those are both on Tuesday, October seventh. They'll do the same thing the next night. They will do back to back one hour sessions on Wednesday, October eighth. The first one is six thirty to seven thirty P M. At Montgomery Blair High School. And again, from seven thirty to eight thirty P M. At Montgomery Blair High School. So that will be the community's opportunity to give their initial feedback of the second round of options.
Is the rest of their timeline the same as far as making a final decision?
Right. So the expectation is that this will go out in October. Or it goes out in September. They'll take feedback throughout October. And then they are then supposed to make a recommendation in about the December timeframe or the, the superintendent. Uh, needs to make a recommendation and they still, the timeframe is for them to. The Board of Education needs to take it up and make determinations by March of twenty twenty six.
Okay.
And then based on that, it starts all of the operational planning. So busing and.
So we should be prepared to see whatever they're recommending and, and sending a letter then. Are they not taking any feedback?
No, they will.
They will. And we'll, we'll send, so our, um, October meeting is the tenth.
Eight is the eighth.
Eighth. So. Um, I would expect that we will talk about the options, the eighth, and then, um, you know, talk about a letter. Um, to be sent sometime before the end of October.
Okay. I just want to make sure we, we're headed again with them.
Yep.
Okay.
And then last is in addition, and I've said that, you know, we brought these updates before. But in addition, the county M C P S has also. Released their initial, uh, proposed regional programming for high schools. So in it, they have, you know, put out proposed six regions. The idea is that a region would cluster together four or five high schools. And that they would then do specialized programming through a regional model. As opposed to the two countywide consortia that they have been running for the last two decades plus. So. Uh, Walter Johnson is in region three, which would be Kennedy High School, Johnson High School, the new Woodward High School and Wheaton High School. And then across that cluster, they would offer, um, specialized programming, one around medical sciences and healthcare. One around the international albatol laureate or I B programs, one around languages and humanities. One around leadership and public service and education. One around visual and performing arts, design and communication, and the last being science, math, computer science and engineering. Under the proposal that, um, was at a school board meeting, you know, Walter Johnson, for instance, in region three. Is, you know, would be proposed to be a language and humanities and a leadership and public service and education focused. Part of the program. There's still the availability for lotterying into other schools within your region. If you are very interested in performing arts and wanted to go to Woodward, for instance, or you're interested in medical science and wanted to go to Kennedy. Um, you know, there's, um, you know, other schools like B C C is in region one with Blair and Whitman and Einstein and Northwood. But then across those five, it's the same separation of the five, um, uh, programming blocks. The idea is that. They feel it would be more equitable to try and pull what was just countywide into a smaller cluster of regional. So that it's more viable for families to participate in because it's not maybe so far away from them in the county.
Okay.
Last thing on that is.
Wait a minute, you already said.
This, on this topic is the consideration that doing this and doing, um, the boundary study. Just from a budgeting standpoint, they're probably going to be about fourteen, fifteen million dollars short. Because all of this adds in the bus routes.
Right.
So, um, just know that as the operating budget of the county comes up. And, um, the operating budget of the M C P S comes up, you know, people hear more about that.
All right. Thank you. Right. Um, does anybody online have any questions about the reports that the council has given this evening? Okay, I'm not seeing any hands. Um, I do, I know, uh, we're running late, but, uh, I want to go ahead and do personal, um, appearances. You have something that is not on the agenda and you'd like to bring up, um, Al? Al Carr?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, hi, uh, everyone. I just, I wanted to just, uh, give a brief update. On, um, a property tax assessment issue. There is the storage property on Plyers Mill Road. And we all get our, um, uh, properties reassessed every three years. The most recent assessment was in December. So from the previous cycle. Um, that, that property's appeal is still in litigation. It's at the Maryland Tax Court. That has not been resolved as of yet. Uh, and then in the current cycle, from December, the, that. Property assessment did get, uh, increased slightly. And then, um, they did appeal that. To, um, the State Department of Assessments and Taxation, S Stat. Um, S Stat lowered. Um, the assessment, I think from seventy four million down to sixty seven million. And then they have appealed it to the next level, which is called P Tab, Property Tax Assessment Appeals Board. But that has not been, uh, adjudicated yet. And that's my update.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have anything? Uh, Joe? Joe?
Thank, yes, Mayor Furman. Thank you. Uh, I just wanted to, um, uh, commend the town manager for his efforts recently. To encourage, shall we say, Washington Gas to repair or pave over the failed patch. That has long been a problem for us in the south side on the Kensington Parkway access road. And, uh, they finally got in there and it didn't take them long once they got underway, but it was, uh, sure was a long wait. And, uh, um, town manager deserves kudos for his efforts to, uh, as I say, to encourage them, Washington Gas, to, to finally get to that. Uh, I agree that the, the, uh, Labor Day Parade was, was quite good. Um, uh. And I, and I say the following as a card carrying Democrat, that I was really pleased to see the presence in the parade. Of the county G O P, the county Republicans. I thought that was a, a nice, uh, touch. Uh, I'm glad that they're there. They've been there in years past and, uh, um, it's good, um, acknowledgement of viewpoint diversity. Uh, I was just wondering if we have any dates, and this is for the town manager, about, um, uh, sweeping of the street sweeping. I know that's usually in the end of August, but it hasn't happened yet, at least not on our side of town.
Yeah, nothing, nothing right now. We don't have anything.
Nothing scheduled.
Nothing scheduled right now.
Okay. Are you planning on something maybe after the leave pickup or?
I don't know. Uh, this year's, uh, been a little busy on some other issues. Um, we'll, we'll see where we're at.
I know there's a twelve thousand dollar budget item, uh, for street sweeping. And, uh, as I say, in years past, it's usually been in, uh. Late August, when that's done, just before the Labor Day Parade. Um, I was curious if there's any preliminary, um, estimates or levels about the participation rates. In the town's food waste, um, program. It's been two and a half months now, or almost two and a half months. And I just wonder if we have any.
Um, I think that we're waiting on the, uh.
We're waiting for the tonnage reports.
No, that's not my question. It's, it's more about how many households seem to be participating. I know Annie's been out. You know, kind of eyeballing the town on the day of the pickups, but I just wonder what sort of townwide preliminary. Emphasis on preliminary assessments there are about participation levels.
I don't think we've taken a full check on a Thursday morning or, you know, how many toters are out.
It's light.
Yeah, I mean, I don't see a lot on Dietrich.
Yeah, but we anticipated that. I mean, we did not expect this to be a townwide thing immediately. Uh, I mean, as we've mentioned in prior council meetings. Recycling was a challenge for us when we moved to the larger bins. We, we did not think that this was going to happen overnight. Um, council member Lifter and council member Angor are working with sustainable Kensington. We're going to help try to resolve some of the questions that we've had to. Hopefully increase participation. Um, but this was not something that I ever thought was going to come out. And everyone was going to have a bin every Thursday. Uh, this is going to take some time. Uh, the tonnage reports, which we have, and will give us a really good idea. Uh, of what we're, what we're dealing with and be able to compare then from week to week. Um, but it's kind of a wait and see at the moment.
Yeah, I mean, I know for me personally, it's just remembering to put it out on a Thursday night or a Wednesday. Yeah, I wonder, I wonder if I get home, it's out already. So I'll have to remember to take it out because they do come early.
Yeah.
I will, I will say anecdotally, um, on like my Thursday morning runs, what's interesting is I'm seeing some houses that I know. Weren't participating in our pilot program with compost crew that are participating. I think just because they have a bin. Um, so I, I, you know, it's not a number, Joe, but anecdotally, there's, there are some people who were not opting in, uh, previously. And, you know, I'm now seeing totes in front of their house. So, you know. To Matt's point, um, it's going to take a little bit to get it off the ground, but it is attracting new participation.
So when is that tonnage report, the first one do, right?
Uh, we get it with the invoice. So once I have the invoice.
And that's expected when?
Um, I, I don't remember when we get the invoice, Joe. I'm sorry. When we get the invoice.
You think we would have a number by the October meeting?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll update in October, Joe.
Good. That's always asking. But anecdotally, on our little street here at Frederick Place, uh, our household's the only one participating. And this has been the case for the last three weeks. And, uh, I know, I realize we're at the end of summer with vacations and so forth, but, uh. Uh, again, anecdotally, it's, it's, it's not a robust, uh, participation rate, at least in this part of town. And, um, finally, uh, I just wanted to, um, underscore that the parking task force at its, um, most recent meeting. Uh, did emphasize the importance of off hours enforcement of parking regulations and, uh. Uh, and I hope that this is a topic that continues to be on the, uh, town council's, uh, uh, horizon. Because it's, uh, it is something that, uh, uh, we've heard many times during the, uh, the, the meetings that we've had of the parking task force. And, uh, the importance of after hours enforcement is, is, uh, seems to be paramount. So, um. Uh, again, that was something that, that, uh, was brought up at the, at the most recent meeting and, uh. And I thought frankly, we might even hear a little more discussion about it tonight by the council. Thank you, Mayor Furman.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay. Let's see any other hands. So let's just, um, I don't have anything else to add. Oh, do you?
I have a question. Sure. Just, um, I wanted to ask that if there's an update on communication with W S S C. About the issue on Kensington Parkway.
So, uh, we did receive a report. It was the same report that the Kurtz received, uh, who were really the residents that are the most affected by this.
Claire, I think that's coming from the Montgomery County, uh, Department of.
Well, the actual, yeah, so our contact with W S S C provided us with an update.
Okay.
Basically on the engineering plan and the walk view and everything like that. Um, I, I, I do know that there's some, some communication on the list serve, uh, Kensington specifically to this. Uh, and some concerns from residents. This is a long-term project. Uh, there is engineering involved. Um, this goes through a, um, it's through Maryland, a national capital parks property through, through their creek bed. Uh, the state of Maryland controls the body of water. So there's an M D E, an E permit involved. Um, and then you have W S S C that has their own. Um and then you have W S S C that has their own regulatory authority. This is a long process. It's something that we told the Kurtz family from the beginning. As they know, we understand that, you know, it's uh inconvenience for for many people, especially with the sidewalk block pumps. It's a little bit out of our control. We do not have the authority to oversee W S S C on this. They are working with uh Montgomery County Parks, uh Maryland National Capital Parks and um and the state of Maryland on getting this moved forward. Other than that, you know, we're not.
The one thing that was brought to my attention by one of our residents is that there's no signage at the beginning of the sidewalk at Kent, letting people know that, especially if you're handicapped, that the sidewalk is blocked. And you take another or just not go in the street, but use that, yeah. Well, there is no way of crossing mid-block if you're in a wheelchair because there's no um
Yeah, there's ramp at um Washington.
Oh, at Washington Street, you're right. I don't know if we have signage that could say sidewalk blocked on both sides.
Uh what they would do is they would, uh we could have W S S C, with those, they'll close the sidewalk where there's an opportunity to cross to the other side.
Okay. Yeah.
So.
So if we could do that, I don't know. Um they sent something to W S S C requesting that, but I'm not sure how fast they'll jump on that. But if we have some sort of signage that we could put on both sides, alerting people that that the sidewalk is blocked.
The access road is also available to walk. I know there's no sidewalk. Well, there's a sidewalk. Yeah, but um, you know, you could direct individuals there as well, so.
Well, unfortunately, you get to that point, then you can't get past it, so you have to turn around. So just, I think that would be good to put some signage up. Okay, and you'll oh Alf?
Sorry, oh, sorry. Can we ask more questions about this?
Were you done?
Well, I was just curious about our communication because I remember hearing that Nate and Matt and probably you, Tracy, had all been in communication with D E P and W S S C and I wanted to what they could get it out.
It started with the discoloration of the water and it's sitting still. And the thought was, well, the problem is that it's clogged. There's so much debris under the the um under the bridge that the water just couldn't go through, it couldn't flow. So after getting Kate Stewart's office to risk, get Parks to help us to, because they didn't want to take responsibility for it. They finally did and they removed all the debris.
Parks didn't want to.
No, we talked to, but we talked to Kate's office to help us. No, Kate's office didn't move it, but she helped us do that. So they removed it. But it didn't solve the problem. So then they, we did get um the Department of Environmental, uh the counties. And they came out and they found that the problem was the sewage. They got W S S C to come up too, and that the pipe was broken. So, you know, they found what the problem was. The problem is the, to solve it is going to take time.
Yeah, yeah, and I know that that on the list of, there were some talk about, you know, council members not doing their, you know, enough work, but I did want to give. But also the county council, because I think Kate's office has been, was really proactive and getting
And they were.
Handed to connect the dots with D E P and W S S C to get them out. Because after that was removed, the issue was that Joe flagged, it's still
Still there.
Still there. And I had gone a couple of times and the water
And I went a couple of times, yeah.
And it wasn't flowing, so they um, you know, they got involved and got them to come out. Now it's in the hands of W S S C. As we pointed out, my question is, is it, I I wanted to go by there today. I didn't have a chance. Does it still look like this?
No.
No, it's on the apron.
Nope, nope. They they cut into the road right here and it's
It buried it?
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Comes out right here.
Okay.
And then
I just wanted to make sure they buried it because they did the same thing over in Chevy Chase View with the water lines.
Yeah.
Thought, okay, they didn't do that here. Pushed for a temporary solution.
Yeah.
And I could see us getting involved in that way.
Right.
But other than that, it's
Yeah, that has all been cleaned up.
And I believe Tracy, you, the barrels are like the last thing that exist around this.
They're over here and I asked whether we could do something to make it a little less, you know, construction looking.
Yeah.
So they're, uh Matt's going to look at that and see whether we can do something. And then put up signs about the blockage of the sidewalk. But I mean, I don't want to say bureaucratic, bureaucratic, but it is. I mean, there are lots of hands in this and they all have to come to the decision at the same time. And as we've experienced with Pepco, as we've experienced with, you know, Washington Gas, I I mean, it's going to take time. Like it or not. And, you know, I don't know, we can hire a full-time mag to but that doesn't necessarily reaches a point where you just don't get your phone answered anymore.
No, but I think it's a good thing to say, you know, Joe, right, you came in, you mentioned something. Nate had noticed something. Those things are what prompted discovering the problem and now getting a plan of action to correct the problem. But while it's in its temporary state, right, there's a lot of people that are going by the parkway. Joe, if you see that that pump isn't pumping or it's not working, like, just, just holler. Let, let us know so that we can make sure that W S S C and D E P are on it, right? There's a lot of more people who are going by that pump every day than W S S C is going to be out.
Yeah, the D E P guy has been very responsive. He's been great, so.
But that pump is to be running twenty-four hours a day, correct?
Yes.
So if for some reason you don't see it running, hear it running, you know, let us know.
Al?
Thank you. Um yeah, I'm sure you all know, but know this, but I just wanted to mention that uh just outside the town, just uh east of the town on University, there's that LED billboard sign that kind of popped up out of nowhere uh that I think you all complained to DPS about. It um, it looks like it's back on again, or at least it was during the day. That's what I saw a few days ago. So from what I could tell, that that sign didn't have a permit originally. Um I I was under the impression that off-site signage is not legal.
No, it's advertising Michael's Plumbing, right, or Michael and Sons?
Yes, and Michael and Sons does not operate in that location.
Basement, but it's not a real store. Because I've seen trucks parked, you know, in the back.
Yeah.
Apparently the top now is an Airbnb.
Oh, interesting, okay.
And then they use the bottom probably as a storage area for stuff. So, but yeah, we can report that back to uh, because they, they're not running a business there.
So, yeah, Michael's and Sons list their addresses, thirty-five eleven University Boulevard West, which is next to the seven, between seven eleven and Lafayette and at the roadway is where that electronic billboard is located.
Yeah. But they're not an actual business there.
This goes back to, you know, C N Os.
The the business is the sign, pretty much.
Right. Okay, thank you, Al. Right, uh, there are no other questions from the council? We're good? Might uh put something together, and I could do that, um is an article about the situation on Kensington Parkway for the journal. So we can do that, just take some pictures and um I got two days to do. All right, so uh Matt, let's go, let's
I'm uh, I'm jumping down to ordinances, reservations and regulations. Council, before the receiving is ordinance number O dash zero four dash twenty twenty-five, in ordinance to the mayor and council of the town of Kensington, amending chapter seven, public health, safety and conduct, Article two, noise section seven dash two zero one, noise control to exempt the town from application of thirty-one B dash nine of the Montgomery County Code. Uh this is the ordinance that would um exempt the public works crew for the town of Kensington only. To continue to use gas leaf blowers. Uh this is not an exemption for residents or commercial properties. It is for the town of Kensington's public works only. Uh the public record closed at four P M on this past Friday, which was September fifth. Uh there were no additional public comments. Uh the council was asked to vote this evening.
I don't, I don't think we really received any.
None.
Yeah.
Other than at the public hearing in July.
Okay, and that was all positive, I believe. All right, is there a motion?
I just want to look at it one more time.
I knew that Darren was watching. That's why Darren's on.
Yeah, he I want to make sure that it is not just backpack leaf blowers.
It's not.
It's not. Okay, that it's the pole behind.
Our giant vac is
Yeah.
So can I get a motion?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll, I'll move to adopt ordinance number O dash zero four dash twenty twenty-five.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
I
Okay, thank you very much. Number two?
Thank you, council. Uh ordinance number O dash zero five dash twenty twenty-five. This is a public hearing. This is an ordinance of the mayor and council of the town of Kensington, authorizing the acquisition of certain property located at one oh four fifteen Montgomery Avenue, Kensington, Maryland for a public purpose. This is the M and T drive-through property. The town is looking to acquire this as the public purpose as surface of bought parking. We're going to request that the council continue the public hearing and remain held open until four P M on Friday, October third, twenty twenty-five.
Do you motion?
I'm thinking.
Public comment.
Yeah, is there any comments?
Jim.
Oh, sorry, Joe?
Yeah, just quick question is to uh refresh our memories as to how much uh this is going to cost the town and what sort of reimbursement there is from the state.
Sure. Uh so the acquisition cost is nine hundred and thirty thousand. The town um through the Maryland State Legislature had two bond bills this past legislative session moved over from the Knowles
Slats.
Slats project uh for eight hundred thousand dollars. So once we take possession of this property, we'll be able to uh be reimbursed eight hundred thousand dollars through the two bond bills in the state of Maryland.
Leaving a balance of what, a hundred, a hundred and some thousand for the town?
A hundred and thirty thousand on the acquisition only. There's additional costs involved with that. Obviously, we have to do uh environmental study on it. There's legal fees involved and that doesn't have any improvements associated with it.
And there's some excavation too, right, with the
Okay.
Or or some removal, I guess, of the of the structure that's already there.
Correct.
Yes.
And and finally, uh how many parking spaces are anticipated there now, roughly?
I think part of that comes down to the final design.
Right, I understand.
That building is removed and the curbing for the drive-through is removed and we determine what space for the front for a little pocket park and and how that is going to work. Because there are utilities and water under there that we may want, they're going to get capped. But we may want to preserve them, so how that is designed will dictate um the final parking count, but it, I would guess it will close to double the amount of spaces that are there. I think we anticipated forty, thirty-six?
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven.
You hear forty.
We'll carve, you know, we can carve a couple up into a motorcycle park.
There you go.
That's how they do it on the D R B. So, is that, is that good, Joe?
Yeah, I've heard, I've heard different estimates. I think town manager was suggesting maybe forty or fifty at one time, but uh I was just curious as to the latest uh guest estimate.
Yep.
Okay, so is there a you want a motion to keep it open?
Yeah, we'd like a motion to keep um, keep the public hearing open until Friday, Friday, uh October third, uh twenty twenty-five at four P M.
Okay. Can I get a motion?
Sure. I move that we keep the public hearing open on ordinance O dash zero five dash twenty twenty-five until four P M on Friday, October third, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, is there a second? Hi, second. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi, okay, thank you very much. Number three?
Thank you, council. Uh resolution number R dash fifteen dash twenty twenty-five. It's a resolution of the mayor and council of the town of Kensington approving a variance at thirty-four nineteen Pliers Mill Road to ex- expand the existing driveway from sixteen feet eight inches to twenty feet in accordance with chapter five housing and building regulations, section five dash one oh seven driveways, parking surfaces of the town code. We held um the variance hearing at our July uh fifteenth council meeting. Council directed staff to uh draft a resolution in support of the variance request.
Is there a motion?
Sure. I move that we adopt resolution number R dash fifteen dash twenty twenty-five.
Your second? Your second? All those in favor?
All right.
Okay, thank you very much. Number four?
Thank you, council. Uh resolution number R dash sixteen dash twenty twenty-five is a resolution of the mayor and council of the town of Kensington, authorizing the town manager to accept the proposal for precision concrete cutting of Delaware and Maryland to remove certain sidewalk hazards within the town uh for uh informational purposes. Uh this is a contractor that we bring in about every three years. Um they basically walk the entire town. They find tripping hazards or issues on our sidewalks. And what they'll do is if there's anything about a quarter inch or less, they'll shave it down. Uh if there's more than that, they advise us uh and we'll have to replace the panel or kind of figure out what to do going forward. Uh there's two proposals in this packet. One is for sidewalks of the town that are under the direct jurisdiction of the town. The other one is under county and state sidewalks. Uh historically, we have taken care of the county and state sidewalks with this contract. We do need to proceed with a mini audit. There's a few sidewalk that they, few sidewalks that they listed that we want to double check. Um so we're requesting that the um resolution be approved, not to exceed the total number of, I believe it was twenty-six thousand nine hundred, was it nine, nine?
It'd be about twenty-seven four hundred and fifty. Twenty-seven three ninety, is what you want?
Twenty-seven three ninety, yeah. So it's probably going to be slightly less than that. So we're just asking the council to approve up to that amount, but the final should be slightly under.
Any questions?
I have a question. Have you happened to, I'm guessing the answer's no, and I'm sure that they probably will have covered it, but in the likeability, walkability audit, people often list and take photos of smaller issues like this. Does that reference back by chance?
I
Share that with them?
I didn't. I can cross-check them when we go, when we do our audit of them. I can cross-check to see what was in there and then we can check them all.
Going thoroughly through it, I saw the list. I mean, there's over a hundred.
Yeah, I mean
So I'm guessing they're probably finding what we already found, but just to make sure.
We can cross-check because there was a lot less on on the spreadsheet that we got from you and Alan that had on this. So um Alex and I should have some time in the next week or two to just cross-check this real quick. Connor can do it in A I.
Because you did, you had, you had identified a bioaddress, right?
Um no, not by address, they're by node. Between roads, like we have them all numbered so that people know what they're doing. What do you mean? Address, like
Thirty-seven oh four Perry Avenue, front lap, right here.
I know, it's on the 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 node between Prospect and
Now go find it.
There weren't that many.
Yeah.
Uh we'll be able to find them.
More than many on the list that we shared, but there may be more. I can ask, if you want to do something and run it with A I, that's fine, but there's a larger spreadsheet that has some of the smaller issues I'm not raised to, so I can ask Alan to share that.
Okay, yeah, like there's, there's ones listed on here that they can't fix. Uh we'll have to replace full panels um and stuff, so you know, we need to check those.
Is it because of the tree or the
It's root, isn't it?
A lot of its roots.
Yeah.
A lot of its roots, so.
Um any questions, further questions? Okay, can I get a motion?
I'll move to uh adopt resolution R dash sixteen dash twenty twenty-five.
Okay, is there a second? A second. All those in favor?
Hi.
And number five?
Thank you, council. Okay, resolution number R dash seventeen dash twenty twenty-five. It's a resolution of the mayor and council of the town of Kensington, authorizing the town manager to accept the proposal from Playground Specialists Incorporated to install place spec rainbow playing place P I P surfacing at Saint Paul Park. This is phase two of the Saint Paul Park ADA improvements schedule. We need to get a P O in to get on the schedule for March, which is when they will start installing again. Council, we did receive at least two emails that I saw. There might have been more since, since I came down here. Some questions uh about the safety and if there's been any uh reviews or or in information regarding the um information. We do have um the report, the state of Maryland in twenty twenty-four, the legislature passed regulation requirements for this type of material. The place spec um P I P does meet those requirements and the drop test also meets it. I believe I gave it to Connor, if you have him. Uh both of them meet the state requirements for safety with regards to this type of surfacing. And that was sent at least to the one email I was able to respond to.
Is that to Ms. Jackman?
Yes, I I did include the full reports back.
Okay.
Uh but I did not, I did not have a chance to respond to the other email that I got.
Okay.
Can I ask what um, I know you reported at length before on the work that was done for this um planning, but I'm curious how much the community team that was assisting uh questioned the safety of the material or looked into. community team that was assisting questioned the safety of the material or looked into it.
The, so the community team that looked at it considered the material for a number of factors. One is the drop test. So the drop test is when, you know, a child, right? Jumps or falls off of an apparatus, there has to be an amount of cushion. So previously with wood chip or mulch. Um, the state requires a certain number of inches underneath the primary drop zone or secondary drop zone. So right at the base of a slide, you have to have it's like six inches of of material elsewhere. You can have like three inches of material. This exceeds all of that. That's what the drop test is. It's from a safety standpoint. From a physical safety standpoint, it meets and exceeds all state and school requirements.
I mean, typically the mulch is gone at the bottom of a slide.
Right, or we're constantly having to do maintenance. And to be honest, I will give anecdotally at Saint Paul Park, the mulch is imagine, you know, like kids take it and they turn it into cakes and pies and other things and, you know, but they take it from where it needs to be.
Right.
Secondarily to specifically how the town is like under swings and as we go forward to under slides, there are those extra mats, the pad, like the safety pads. We've incorporated those into the designs under the the high impact areas. They provide an even greater amount of impact retardation and, you know, help make it even safer for falls and trips. Now, this question is all about is the material safe from a not toxic. You know, I, listen, I did a little bit of online research between when the emails came in, but also as we talked about it with parents in the design. Their thing was, hey, they were more concerned about wood chips and and mulch because kids putting that stuff in their mouth. That it's very common, smaller kids that they, you know, they're picking this stuff up and they're, you know, whereas here this is a fixed surface, right? And it's from generally recycled tires, the state guidelines, which are in the place spec a letter all indicate, you know, especially, you know, that there can't be more than ninety parts per million of lead and that it can't come from a component that was known to have a P fast chemical previously added to it. P place spec's point is none of the materials do. They meet or exceed all the state guidelines. From your question, you know, the parents were like, hey, from a accessibility, a play accessibility, you can't traverse over mulch with a wheelchair or mobility device. Um, when there are secondary caregivers of, you know, like grandparents who might not be assured for to like the mulch presents real safety, tripping hazards. All of these, you know, are you know, addressed through the surface that we've installed in phase one and are looking to do in phase two. There's another concern rightfully, right, that this material, just like with the artificial turf or field grass playing fields that it increases heat. We are very fortunate that at this playground varies. We have a huge tree camp that, you know, we were there all summer long and it does not, you know, it is a full shade area where it is. You know, there are parts of the current, what we call phase two, that it get more sunlight. And that may be something that is to be, you know, other places that address that is more so, you know, you can put sunscreens and other things up. I've been looking at the, it's getting really nerdy about these services now. We've been to a lot of playgrounds deep in Mississippi in August where my in-laws live, where it is beyond hot. And the surface generally is, it is safe to the touch. It's not hot. My kids lay on it. I lay on it. Yeah, sure, in the shade it's yet even cooler, but it it's, you know,
Okay.
It, I have not found an issue with. That's anecdotally one person's.
Yeah, no, I was more mostly interested in, because I haven't had time to look through what just came in from the public, the any concerns about the toxicity or the endocrine disruption and whether that was an area of analysis other than what you shared from the report.
Yeah. No, I mean, the the biggest part of the conversation, we talked to the parents of kids who would get more access to play spaces was either we don't go to playgrounds because they have mulch and and wood chips. Um, or even P pebble, like the the stone pebbles, just the wheels can't move. Or when we get there, if the wheels can move over it, then you know it's not like, it's not safe to fall on because if the, if the wheels can easily move over it, there's not enough mulch. And then the bigger concern was like kids putting this stuff in their mouths.
It's like, are you, can I go in?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
My two questions just ever raised, I was just trying to skip through the email. We're just around the well, actually wasn't raising the email, but you talk about putting in the mouth and people's kids' mouth, but I remember that we had some problems with this coming off and actually becoming mulch-like and being collected in certain parts of the of the park so that it's kind of still a concern, maybe even more of a concern if they're putting what could be recycled tires in their mouths. If we don't get that fixed, I think we still run it not, it's not as abundant everywhere in the playground, but it still could be an issue that um, that I would be, that I'm concerned of if if we're worried about people putting stuff in their mouth, right? So the second question was just around, I mean, I don't, again, I didn't, we we all got this when, uh, when we did, this is a question about um, whether engineered fire, wood fiber was considered, because if you can same is more, it's safer, it's an alternative material. Was that considered at all in the production process with the playground company? As an alternative, is it, is it a viable alternative?
Are you talking about the wood, like that it's rubber, but it's it's thrown like
Non-toxic, eighty accessible, gold standard, has to equipment can be made more. Anyway, if they, it sounds like it's a material that may be an alternative to the recycled tires. I was just curious if it was at all considered or they even offer it and how much more would add, you know, considering that you know, we're trying to balance trade-offs here, like we do with a lot of issues. We want more accessibility, we want better liability, but we also want environmental health and safety and quality.
I don't remember it being a material that place spec uses. Um, and when we inquired about the safety of the material that they did, right, and and they provided us with the documentation and the testing from drop testing and what the material is made of and how it conforms to and meets and exceeds the standards of the state requirements that, you know, we proceeded.
Yeah. Well, is it, is it, um, are we beyond that point where they can even, we could ask?
The, I don't think it's beyond it. I wonder if it's something we can do in tandem and I defer map, but like, would we want to? We cannot schedule phase two at all without approving the resolution. Could we approve the resolution and as we're scheduling, talk to them about it? And if it isn't a dish, if it's a different material, we can ask them to price it out and bring it back.
I'd be okay with that. Just to research.
And and also marrying up the joint point, right, of phase one and phase two. Can those two materials?
Yeah.
So you're asking to to approve it so it kind of we make our whole place?
So if they don't know, if they don't have it and we're okay proceeding, then we have approved the resolution and can schedule, get on the schedule for spring.
So if we wait till October, what does that push us to April? That's still spring.
When did we approve it? This last year, we looked for phase one.
I I do not know what their scheduling is. What what Jeff told me was to get first in line for March, which is when they'll start putting this material back down. Is that I needed to get him a P O. He he didn't say I needed to get it to him by Friday or anything like that. He just said I need to get a P O to him. I mean, I, I will say, we've been talking about this surface material for over two years in public forums. And it is already in this park. And we have not, until, we received one email earlier this year and until tonight, we have not received any comments about the issues with this material. Uh, we talked about this in these meetings. We talked about them in our budget hearings. There was a group with this material. And this only came up tonight. So staff will do whatever you guys ask us to do. We'll hold it, the resolution if you want. If you proceed with passing it, we'll do that. We can look into other material. Um, but this has been a process for well over two years and
I just feel like
Until tonight, yeah, we have not.
Proving this, knowing that we may not use it.
Yeah.
So it's like either just wait until next month and do a little bit more research to see if there's a better product, but as Matt said, that product that we're questioning is already in the park.
Well, and I guess we we had the two concerns. We had the one about it getting washed away, which I haven't been back to look and see what it's like, but then when I read the latest email um, tonight and didn't have time to like look into all of the things that were referenced, I was putting those two things together. Like what if this substance does degrade in a way that it does leach into, you know, what kids are interacting with and putting in their mouths. And so I feel like I'd like a little bit more time to look into and understand better what, you know, the concerns are and also what the options might be if there are other options.
Well, I know there's, there's the rubber material that's over behind the H O C under that stuff, but over time that also uh, starts to dissolve or to
I'm sure there's no perfect solution.
Yeah.
That's like the reality.
Yeah, so.
I mean, we have perky pave.
Yeah, that that actually has a, yeah. There's a dusty part, but they're little tiny things kids they're not playing there. They're just walking on it. So, um.
I have no problem waiting a month, so long as I know, like, I clearly very much want to proceed with phase two, but I understand the issues and the questions. I think it is absolutely worthwhile to hold off a month. My question is, what is the process? What, like, what are we gathering and what are we going to examine and what is? How are we going to make a determination in October that we couldn't make today?
Well, I think knowing if there's another option, like the wood fill fiber option. Like that's something that I haven't read about yet and we don't know if it's an option yet. There might be something else like that.
And is that approved by the state?
Well, and if it meets all, but then what if there's a part of the population that has, as opposed to that material?
Then they'll
Or there's another trade-off. What if that material is, you know, has less or something, but degrades faster? Like what are, you know?
Yeah, I mean, we'll have to, there will be trade-offs. I think we'll have to make a decision. I guess the best we can hope for would be able to present in advance of the meeting, this is what we know in terms of our options and the pros and cons of the different options. And and we're gonna make a recommendation as to which one to use.
Yeah, and also what's, what is the mitigating measure being taken to prevent the current material from being washed away and coming loose? The, you know, for the, I don't know, if there's a plan to prevent that? Because if we're just doubling down, just saying because it's there, we have the sun cost, we have to do what's already there. Um, we're having problems with it already. Might this alternate at least prevent it from happening to phase two?
So are we asking staff to look into it or are we asking individuals that are to do some research on their own or? I mean, I I I say we just wait till October to kind of make a decision. I think that's pretty clear. But I think, you know, I mean,
I, let's see, Connor, I'm curious what you think, having worked with all the community members, but it feels like uh, in terms of a process, I'd be interested in reading some of what was submitted. Having Matt find out if there are alternative materials that this vendor provides or other vendors provide. And Connor, the point I was curious, your thoughts on uh, getting input from your community committee, like if they have views on this and have looked at this.
Uh, yeah, I will certainly ask them. Um, you know, I think I don't want to assume, so I won't say, I I will ask them and then, you know, it may come down to, well, here are the most common parks we've been to and then we'll have to try and figure out from those parks what materials to be used, right? Um, this same materials in several other places in Montgomery County. But we, you know, I'm happy to work with Matt to figure out has Montgomery County or are there other?
Could we reach out to Rockville and gave us
And we'll see one in Arlington. Yeah, Clemmy Hunt Tree has a big, and and just see what material was used there. It may be the same or it may be some alternative and so.
And we're not under any obligation to use playground. We want to use somebody.
No, nope.
So I think we're gonna leave this one. And but I would request that everybody kind of do a due diligence on their own and have Connor reach out to his ad hoc committee and get their seat back. As I, uh, if we need to, we can do a work session for the meeting to go over it.
Yes, I will be away October eighth.
Okay, we haven't got that. We got one more resolution than we're looking. Okay, all right. So, uh, so number five?
I probably need a motion.
A motion not to do it?
Table with, to table with October.
Well, you haven't done anything with it, so I don't think we need to, we're just gonna we're not gonna do anything. We're gonna skip it.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, resolution number R dash eighteen dash twenty twenty five, a resolution of the mayor and council of the town of Kensington authorizing a contract with Nazario Construction Corporation for street sidewalk stormwater structures and related construction and services. The city of Tacoma Park issued a R F P in June for the same services. Uh, N Z I Construction was the winner better and was awarded the contract. Uh, staff is requesting that we piggyback off those terms. It would be a three-year contract with two one-year renewals based on the unit pricing um, within exhibit B of the packet. Uh, exhibit A is the approved resolution from Tacoma Park. And if the council moves forward with this, uh, we're requesting that it's subject to review by the town attorney uh, because we do not have contract ready to sign yet.
Any questions? Any questions from the audience? Yes, Joe.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Furman. Uh, what the resolution before the town council doesn't make clear or even state is that the city of Tacoma Park actually awarded two contracts for for identical work, one for N Z I. The other for a company D N F Construction. They were both awarded contracts, identical contracts for indefinite quantities for street sidewalk and stormwater structural uh, construction. So I'm, my question is, um, did the town of Kensington, in the spirit of fairness to the contractors and transparency, have a conversation with D N F Construction, which as I say, also received city of Tacoma Park work to do similar work that N Z I was also contracted for?
We did not. Uh, D N F's quote, uh, bid proposal was actually higher than N Z I's on the total contract. It was a couple hundred thousand dollars less for N Z I. Um, we have used D N F in the past. It's been many years. There's no issues with them. Uh, we went with the lower bid. Tacoma, uh, Tacoma Park is a much larger city than ours. They're about ten times our size. They have two contractors in case one contractor is not available to do business. We don't have that problem. That's why we stick with one contractor. If we were to come apart, Rockville, Gage, or something like that, maybe we consider that. Um, but we did go with the low bid. This was publicly bid out. N Z I was the low bid contractor and and we're staff's happy to continue to work with them, so.
They did a really nice job on the sewer down on Hadley and we had a lot of compliments from the residents there on the work that they did.
Why does the town not seek bids on this work? I mean, N Z I has been given no bid work by the town of Kensington for many years. Before your time as town manager, Matt, it was, you know, you were assistant town manager, I think, when uh, N Z I first got its work and it's a perennial question, why not, why not send this this work out? Bid.
It was bid out.
It was bid out by Tacoma Park.
It was bid out by Tacoma Park. I I used their staff for free.
Yeah, it's more, it's more efficient when we can use another procurement process that
That's the excuse, that is that is, that is what has been expressed about this no bid contract for N Z I for many years by the town of Kensington. It's easy just to piggyback. When this first was done, this was not meant to be a permanent or quasi-permanent thing. So if we know there are contractors out there like D N F, they're they're willing to bid on this work, why not? Why should the town of Kensington not seek bids for this kind of construction, especially when that, when it runs to the hundreds of thousands of dollars?
Well, I think we did receive two bids through Tacoma Park.
Indirectly.
Yeah.
Why not the town of Kensington prepare bid packages and 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 ask prospective contractors? Perspective contractors to 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 bid for the work rather than going through. The city of Ken, uh, city of Tacoma Park, which the town manager just said is quite different, it has much, much more. Um, demand and there's much more work there. Why not tailor this for the town of Kensington? This is, this is not a difficult process, it doesn't seem to me.
The bids are comparable as far as the work, type of work we want done. Go ahead. Sure.
Your code allows you to piggyback, that's what it's called colloquially, to piggyback on a bid process that is at least as. Strenuous and and open as yours would be. Tacoma Park has that kind of. Bid process, it avoids having to go out to bid on the same type of work, you're taking advantage of the fact that another government. Uh, with the same type of bid process has already done it. And then you can, if they provide the same pricing, then you can adopt that pricing. The town uses its own contract, but it gets the si- the same pricing. And so it doesn't have to go out to bid and that's allowed in the code. And so that's all that the town is doing right now, is taking advantage of the fact that someone else went out to a full bid.
Maybe I haven't made myself clear enough, but this is the process the town of Kensington has used. For many years, I don't know, it's ten years, twelve years, it had been piggybacking for ten or twelve years. Unfortunately, the code apparently doesn't say you can only piggyback for a certain length of time. But this has become indefinite piggybacking and I think it's time for the town just to seek its own bids. Because as the town manager said a few moments ago, the city of Tacoma Park is quite different from the town of Kensington.
So I will say, uh, this R F P was put out in June of twenty twenty-five. This is not a little bit, this bid is less than three months old. It gives us unit pricing for three years guaranteed with two one-year options, with a company that's been with the town for eighteen years. And we received many, many compliments on it. D N F is also a very good company, their unit pricing overall was two hundred thousand dollars more. And staff is requesting uh, to continue our contract with N Z I.
Personally, I would not want, no, knowing that you've just shared that, that this is very recent competition, that it was competitive. That we have received good service from them, I do not think it would be a good use of staff time. To run a separate parallel bid process right now, given all the other projects we have going on. So I would like to move to adopt uh, resolution number R dash eighteen dash twenty twenty-five.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, council.
Are you, are you, you've cut off public comment, though?
I, I think we.
I think we were done.
No, I don't think we were. I had further comments to make. About this, about this uh, about this resolution.
Well, thank you for your, I felt like we heard your input, I don't know, I I just feathers feel differently.
Well, let me just finish what I was gonna say, even though you, I knew this was gonna be, you know, unanimously supported by the council. There's, there's some odd wording in the town's resolution, at least as far as I'm reading it. In the now therefore be it resolved paragraph. It makes reference to um. Authorizing and extending the contract with N Z I through and until June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, I'm sure the 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 town didn't really mean that, but that's, that's what appears in black and white in the uh. In the resolution.
Well, it's, it's a three-year contract with two one-year options. Options. To extend. So basically it's could be a five-year contract.
You're talking about right underneath, I think there's a typo.
So.
Oh, a typo?
To extend the contract through and until June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five is what the resolution reads. And that date has clearly passed, so I was only gonna point out this before, you know, the uh, uh, public comment was was uh. Abruptly cut off, but uh, that's very confusing. I don't know what exactly what the town means by that, but uh, it's a clearly.
So, Ellen, would you like just to amend that? Or is it gonna just be?
I think we can recognize what the wording is, which is that it's three plus two.
Okay.
And it's a typo.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, uh, so I'm hearing uh, that we need to change the Wednesday, October. Find out if anybody else is not around. Um. Stuart's not here. Um. Or you're not able to do Zoom, is that correct?
Right.
Okay.
You can hear the baby four, you're about a week.
Yeah. Uh, they own, yeah.
You able to do it the first?
Um, possible.
I won't be there.
You won't, you can't do the first. Alright, so we're gonna go to the fifteenth.
Uh, four.
If, if we want a public discussion on boundary study later is better than earlier, just because.
Right.
The, the.
After that.
Yeah, public hearings are, are community meetings of a seven and eight.
Okay. You guys are lucky, this isn't Somerset.
Yeah.
That mayor sets the dates and that's when the meeting is. Thinking his mother passed away and he still had the meeting.
Well, we're not.
Yeah, I know, I'm just saying. They just talk about, so I'm gone until the.
Oh, okay.
So that, and and that's why you may not be able to schedule around me.
I know, that makes sense, um.
Twentieth?
And then I'm on the twentieth.
Then I could do. Alright, so you might have to miss this, yeah, I'm, okay.
Yeah.
I, I mean, I hate to go beyond the fifteenth, quite honestly.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll try to have input before I leave town.
Um, is it helpful to do the fifteenth just because of the M C P S? No?
I don't think so, I think the, you know, assuming that Stuart can confirm his availability on the eighth, I think.
And you have enough.
Yeah, alright, so let's plan on the eighth and we will confirm with Stuart.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that he's available on the eighth, I mean, that's when it's planned anyway, so hopefully it'll. Okay, so um, alright, so could I get a? Oh, one last thing I do wanna talk about is I need an extra council member. Want to sit down with Matt and go through the um, the designs that we're looking at and the estimates we've received. For the uh upstairs office, we've received two estimates, kind of three in a way, but. Two for sure.
Yeah.
And to go through those and um, so we can come back to the October meeting and make a decision. Oh, yeah. So, well, I know you are, but uh, you're not around, or you're out of town, so maybe, you're out of country.
Yeah.
Alright, well, maybe Stuart would be available. Okay.
Yeah, let's give it to him.
Yeah. Okay, so yeah, with that, and then also, uh, we did receive a sort of a. A kind of an estimate on the M and T, but it really, I don't think they were. It was out of the box.
It was a worse, I don't wanna say worse, it was a very high number.
Yeah, but I.
Out any engineering or anything like that, so we need to walk this back, kind of figure out what we want.
Right.
Um, it's been recommended to us by Neil Stavlo, who's our building inspector, is also a part of Donovan Construction. That it would make sense for us to design this now. With the facilities in mind and potentially a tiered parking structure down the road as opposed to trying to make major changes down the road.
Yeah.
Um, so we just kind of need to figure out what we want, uh, to put together a plan and then kind of get a better idea what costs might be moving forward, so.
Yeah. Okay, so uh, Connor, hopefully Stuart and Matt and I will sit down and then we can have more information at the October meeting. And then hopefully for the offices as well.
Okay.
Okay. Alright, sounds good. Okay, I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn the meeting.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Hi, hi.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Everybody.